I find somebody new to go to that's not gonna destroy my hair.
Well, eh Lauren like likes her lady, so you're gonna go to her?
I texted her, yeah, she gave me the name, so I'll look her up. She said she's close, so.
Yeah, my lady, my my lady is pregnant and last time she had a baby. The last three months she was on total bed rest, but now I have a backup lady just in case. You wanna be without a backup.
Well, I have been for almost twenty years, so actually more than twenty years. Same person the whole time, but you know, he went and moved on me.
I think this is the longest that I've seen your hair.
It's it's the longest I've seen my hair since I was a kid, so.
Yeah, it looks good, you probably have to take like three or four inches just to give it more more life, yeah.
Get rid of the dead part. Yep.
You found your little spot there with your flag?
Yeah. Had to do a deposition for me earlier, I moved the flag though. Yeah, exactly.
Did you eat, did you eat your snacks?
Yeah, some of. With this diet, I don't really have much of an appetite lately. Yeah, it's fine, it's all good.
It has shrunk your your appetite?
Yeah, it shrinks your stomach after you're not eating as much. One of our residents came to City Hall for the meeting. He's like, is there a meeting tonight? I'm like, yes, virtual, and he's like, oh, I'm going home then.
Go put on your PJs and go home. I was very impressed with how quickly the results from the test of the city came.
Really, yeah. Did you get the ones back from Walgreens yet too?
Oh, the one from Walgreens was incon- incon- inconclusive.
Inconclusive?
Inconclusive. Um, but thank God yesterday I went to the city, got my my results from the city already today. Um, and then I went to the to the county and got my results the same day. I'm done with Walgreens, well, I'm done with tests. I've only had like seven tests in the past month. So I'm good, thank God.
That is good.
I'm glad that they made Pfizer now, now it's officially approved by the FDA.
FDA, yep. I had somebody ask me today if we were still testing at the city and I told them yes, I gave them all the information.
Yeah, and I'll give you guys the update about the extension in my manager's report, so I'm super happy about that.
That's good. Thing I told you, the the people are very excited about there being Sunday hours because a lot of places don't have Sundays, so it's that's a that's a big deal.
Yeah, the Sunday through Thursday is perfect. Okey dokey, two minutes to game time. I already told Monica, keep your phone handy just in case.
Yep.
We tested this like seventeen times today to make sure. City Attorney, are you there?
I am.
Commissioner Llewellyn, is your volume working?
It should be.
It is, okay, just wanted to make sure. Where we started, good evening everyone, I would like to welcome you all to the Dania Beach City Commission Virtual Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, and it is seven PM, call the roll please.
Mayor James.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Llewellyn.
Here.
Commissioner Rodman.
Here.
Thank you. City Manager Garcia.
Here.
City Attorney Ansbro.
Here.
I'd like to take a moment of silence and I'll have you on. And please stand for the flag. A diligence to the flag.
Of the United States of America. Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We will start first, our presentation on the Summer Youth Employment Program by Ms. Latima King. There she is.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how's everyone? Um, I'm trying to see if my young lady has joined us, I don't see her name. Uh, we I've, we did uh reach out to one of the youth that did um participate uh in the program this year, I think she's trying to sign on, her name is Destiny Strickland. Um, this year, we, uh, I'm sorry.
She's on.
Okay, great. Hi Destiny, can you put your camera on? I know you might be on your phone. If you can, that would be great, if you could come on camera. And unmute yourself.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, great. Well, this year we had the pleasure of having the City of Dania Beach participate with the summer program. And um, the city funded seven youth from Dania Beach. We uh started the program off with seven, unfortunately, one youth did have to uh drop out of the program due to medical issues and she was unable to um we were unable to accommodate, she was unable to uh continue in the program um completely. Uh, so the City of Dania Beach funded six youth for the rest of the summer and those six youth did work at various work sites. Um, one being Arts and Culture Center of Hollywood where Destiny Strickland did work as a camp counselor aide. We had two youth there, Destiny and another youth, then we had another work site Sterling Road Library. And we also had Hollywood Branch Library, Dania uh Elementary School and Puffles. Puffles is a new work site for us and it's actually a ice cream parlor on the beach. So we thought that was really cool. Who doesn't wanna work at a ice cream parlor? Uh, we did have a youth work there and uh we had two youth uh scheduled to work there, but one of the youth that was scheduled unfortunately was the one that had to drop out. Um, all the youth in our program received uh a payroll card. We issued this payroll card to all the youth so that they have access to their funds every pay period. We directly deposit their funds onto that card. Um, the card is mailed directly to their home, they do have to activate it with their personal information. And we give them the information on how the best to use the card so that they don't occur any type of fees when using their card. We have work site monitors that we employ that go out to each work site that they are assigned. And they are checking the time sheets, they're picking up the time sheets, they're interacting with the youth. They're also just observing the youth to make sure that the youth are doing what the job description that is given to us um uh provided to us is correct. And that the supervisors are adequately supervising the youth. They are also there to um offer any technical assistance, so if the supervisors having any issues or concerns with the youth um, the monitor is there to try to um work out those issues with the youth to see if there's anything that can be done, why you know, the youth may be late or whatever the issue may be. Um, I can say that the work site monitor, um, her name was Shawnee Sumter assigned to these different work sites um that uh where the youth worked. Um, had nothing but good things to say about the youth and had nothing but good things to say about each work site. So all of these work sites and the youth um was easy breezy for her and which was really good because our um work site monitors, they do have more than two and three work sites to get to. Some of the job positions uh titles that they held was like I mentioned at the Arts and Culture Center, um was the camp counselor aide. So I'm sure Destiny can probably talk a little bit more about what she did at Arts and Culture. Um, at the library, they are shelving the materials, they're also coming in contact with the customers that come into the library, helping them find the materials that they're looking for. Um, as well as helping them, the customers check out the books and the materials. And at the school, um, usually the positions, they are either custodial or at the uh front office registering new students. The youth that worked at Dania Elementary did work in a custodial position where they helped prepare the school for the next school year, sanitizing moving furniture from classrooms and offices to prepare for the new school year. Um, we, all the youth also receives a evaluation during the fifth week of the program. And this is where their assigned supervisor sits down, evaluates their work performance. Um, and goes over the evaluation with them, gives them a a point of um um, I guess points you can say, I think the highest is thirty six that they can get. Um, and then gives them, you know, their strengths, their weaknesses. Um, and then we also provide a participant manual to all the youth. In that manual, it just gives the dos and don'ts about the program, it gives their pay schedule, it gives their work site monitors name and number, who to call here at the office if by chance they can't get in touch with um their work site monitor. And success for us for the program is basically really having the youth work at a site, learning um hard some hard skills, the soft skills, and finishing the program at the end. And um, I would say all six youth that was funded under the City of Dania Beach did complete the program. And um, the last pay period is this Friday, so all the youth will get their last check this Friday directly deposited on today payroll card. So at this time, I will turn it over to Destiny and she can uh kinda give you a little brief uh of what she did this summer.
Hi, my name is Destiny and a lot of the work I did this summer let me say, the kids were the best part, it was so much fun. At first I thought I wasn't gonna like it, but it was a lot of fun. And I was able to work with kids and, you know, I have younger siblings, so I know what that entails, but like I learned to work with other people's kids. So cause af- like in the beginning, I found myself talking to them like I would talk to my siblings, it was like, okay, I can't do that. So I learned how to cooperate with kids, how to talk to them, how to work with them. I learned how to work with other people, not that I haven't worked with other people before, but getting intel from the other counselors, from the other adults that were there. And working, um, we had field trips one time, so going around the museum and helping out with that and learning about the artwork that's around, keeping the kids in line. It was a lot of that and it was a lot of fun and I liked it and I learned a lot. And I could go on knowing how to address kids and other little office works that I did. And filing and shredding and all that good stuff, so yeah.
I wanna ask if any of the um, the commission have any questions for Ms. King or Destiny? Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Always looking for that raise the hand button, but um how, thank you so much, um, Latima and Destiny for coming on. I think it's absolutely amazing, I love directly hearing from the youth, so that is uh really what I'm I'm looking for, that you're able to have a quality experience in the program, that you're learning. You know, how people's skills, different social skills and uh social emotional learning skills is how to deal with other children and um with other people, so I'm really happy to hear that. Um, as you know, this program is very expensive and so you know, as long as it's worth it and we have the investment that we're, you know, that we're receiving the return on investment in our youth, which is you, then I I don't have a problem with that. But I am, you know, in my PhD program because I'm always learning and growing and looking at different kinds of program evaluations to make sure that they're quality. And so um, some of the questions that that Latima that came up for me were with the work site monitors, if they're, I know a part of that program that really comes in and evaluates the kids on a weekly basis. And I wonder, are do they are do they have provide weekly reports? Or is there something that you get something on the kid to see how their progress is on a weekly basis? And also for the uh, the fifth week of the evaluation of the pro- of the project. Is there a way that we are able to access or be able to see how well the children are doing in the program? And then um, if you have a final evaluation of the program and the children who participated overall.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the work site monitors, they go out every day to their work sites. Um, and they are making sure again that the time sheets are being filled out correctly. They are meeting with the supervisors to make sure everything is going okay, as well as with the youth. And then there's times where they just go out and observe and watch the youth while they're working. Um, they do weekly case notes on all their youth. They turn them in to me and to my assistant on a weekly basis, we read them. Um, as we're reading them, if we have questions or if we see that there's a follow up that's needed. We make sure that we communicate that with the work site monitors. The work site monitors meet with me every afternoon, three o'clock. And they discuss with me what's going on at each work site. If anything is very personal that's happening at a work site, then they meet with me one on one. Um, so that happens every day. So I am abreast to what's happening with each youth at each work site. Um, because I meet with the the monitors every day. And then your other questions, evaluations, uh, I have no problem sharing the evaluations with you. Uh, so that you can see what areas are being evaluated, what is being said by the supervisor to the youth. Any comments that the youth may have. Um, as far as a final evaluation, because the program is so short, we are unable to do a final evaluation. That's why we do this evaluation during the fifth week, because it gives time for the youth to get acclimated to their position. And for the supervisors to adequately observe from the beginning, from the start to at least midway. Um, anything um that may need improvement and then give that feedback. Um, during uh the last case note, we do ask the work site monitors to just give a overview as to what they have seen the youth, um, the type of uh experience the youth had during the summer and it's nothing uh elaborate, it's just a few sentences, maybe two sentences that you know, the youth had an overall great experience doing, you know, customer service or, you know, whatever their job title may have been. Or if they had a youth that may have started off um, a little rough around the edges and they saw the youth improve, they would write that in their final uh case note.
So there's not specific measurable objectives that you were looking for the youth to obtain from the beginning and then are able to follow that up with the final assessment?
Well, with our main funder, they do have uh performance measures that I have to meet. And we do a survey, the survey is anonymous, the youth fill out the survey, the employers fill out the survey. Um, I'm about to review those surveys tomorrow, we extract the feedback from those surveys. Um, we're looking to see overall experience from both parties, what they may say about their experience. We look at the youth who have fit, who started, how many you started, how many you finished to kinda gauge um, the success that way. And they, the main funder also looks at, they do a pre-test and a post-test. The pre-test covers the um, basic soft skills uh scenarios at work type of questions. Um, coming into the program to kinda gauge any um knowledge they may have uh uh working in the work environment. And then it's the same questions that they have to answer towards the end of the program. And we have the youth fill that out during the sixth week of the program. And the main funder, they do the analysis to see the improvement.
Okay, thank you, I mean, I know it's it's a bit much, but I I really, I really appreciate that kind of detail and that's really what I'm looking for in a quality program. I would be interested in an evaluation and I I would be interested in having more testimonials from the kids that we funded because I think for me, that's really what makes the difference, you know, having the kids experience, the kids testimonials and being able to have documentation to justify why we're spending the amount of money that we're spending on the kids. And as long as it's justifiable, then like I said, then I I I'm good with it and I thank you for your detailed report on that.
Well, thank you, we normally do have more testimonials, uh but we, you know, we're still in the uh COVID era that we're in. So we do have to abide by the rules and regulations that's put on us by our by the different work sites. And um, as far as video and uh things like that, we were very limited to what we could do. Um, or what, you know, could have happened in the future, because we normally have uh more testimonials, more video and things like that, and we were only able to really get a video of Destiny and her coworker that worked at Arts and Culture. Uh, the schools had summer school this year, so it's very hard to try to get video and testimonial from the employer or the youth that worked there without getting all the background people. So, but I appreciate that and we do try to do that for everybody, actually, the funders as well as the youth um, to promote our program in a whole.
Destiny, if you didn't have this opportunity, what would you have done this summer?
I probably would have gotten a different job. And it probably would have been working in service, I wouldn't have got the um.
Destiny, can you speak up a little bit?
Um, uh, with the program, I probably would have been, I probably would have got a different job somewhere else. Not learning what I learned at the center, because that kind of job is not open. Like just, uh, I can apply for this and get this kinda job. It's me at my age, the only people that want me is staff food, so it would have been a job like that where I would have been working customer service, probably stressed out. So, I'm happy I had this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Um, Latima, if it's possible, because I I I'm listening to the the comments that Commissioner Davis is speaking. Is it possible even to try and get just a few words from the other participants on um, you know, what the experience meant to them and if they would recommend this program and maybe send it to all of us in an email?
I can definitely try to reach out to each, excuse me, each youth to see if they can write something out um for you guys.
Okay, okay, uh, i- is there any more questions from the commission? I mean, I personally, I look forward to funding this again um with our kids, I I, I think it's very vital that we um, invest in our youth and in our, in our kids and in in their education and trying to figure out a way um, of what they want to do, if if you could have, Destiny, you could have uh went to that job and say, you know what, I can't be around all these kids. And I knew something, I thought I wanted to be a counselor, but I no, I no longer want to do these things. Um, so I think it's very beneficial and it shows that the city is is taking a stance and investment on our youth and in their future. So, um, I wanna thank the commission for uh doing this this. So, um, I want to thank the commission for, uh, doing this this past year. And I'm hoping that, you know, we'll be able to do it again in the following years. So thank you, Latima and Destiny for, for coming to spend a couple of minutes with us.
Thank you so much and thank you for the city for, um, um, providing us with the funding to, uh, give this opportunity to the youth from Dania Beach.
Thank you. And now we have the safety committee award of recognition of the safety committee.
Thank you, Destiny.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. From the city manager, go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon. I mean, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. And our HR director, but I also want to take the opportunity to thank our HR director, um, Rafael Acosta, the chairman of this committee and all our city employees that participated and continue to participate in this very, very vital program, particularly, um, helping us, uh, navigate the challenges of COVID and health and safety, uh, throughout the entire city. So with that, I'll turn it over, um, to HR Director Linda Gonzalez.
Thank you, manager, and good evening, everyone. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to really thank the mayor, the vice mayor, the commission and the city manager for allowing us to really come and recognize our outstanding safety committee members. This has been a true team effort with, um, many of our departments. Uh, BSO is participating with police and fire. Our department directors have been very, very supportive of the team. And the team, um, meets every single month and were recognized this year for the, uh, Safety and Risk Management Member of the Year Award. There were over four hundred entries for this award. And the team, um, won this award really for taking the leadership and creativity that they did. Um, with really inspirational leaders with our chair and vice chair, helping us, uh, change many of the things and improve upon processes with the safety committee. So I just want to read the names of the people. Most of them are pictured, not all of them. Starting off with our chair is Rafael Acosta from Parks and Recreation. Anthony Afeedy is our vice chair from Parks and Recreation. Benja Cassanuebe is our secretary from HR. Chief Pelisair from the Fire Department, Mike Huck from the Life Guards, Tanisha Gaines from Finance, Monica Torasis just joined us from IT. The deputies from BSO are Taryn Session and Eric Hoff. From Public Services, we have Willis Washington, Corey Taylor and Louis Borges. From the CRA, Keisha Eugene. From Community Development, Debbie Sabino. And from Code and Parking, Ricky Ali and Ricky Dobson. And then, um, we also have Michelle Martin and Pam Hancock on, from the Public Risk Underwriters of Florida that attend all of our committee meetings with us. So I want to congratulate everyone. Everyone will be receiving a certificate signed by the manager that will be part of their file. And some of the great things they've done with the help of IT was our See Something, Say Something campaign and app creation, which we've had, uh, many, many preventative, um, preventative things that we've done with the help and support of our great public services team. So thank you to everyone for their dedication, their commitment and their contributions that they've made towards the safety of our employees, our residents and our visitors.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much to everyone that is a part of this team. Um, I, I know in Parks, we have great leadership there, so I'm sure that they're up on all angles and up and running. And I'm just happy that we have received this award. So kudos to everyone who is a part of the safety committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Linda.
Next up, a special event request for the Marina Eighty-Four Sports Bar and Grill. Do we have, um, for the Marina Eighty-Four Bike Night, do we have any issues with this?
Mayor, um, no, we don't. As a matter of fact, um, what we would like to propose, uh, based on my conversation with Eleanor, eh, the chief and candido, is, um, to allow, uh, this special event, um, for sixty days to go, uh, up to eleven versus ten. Um, and we would monitor if there is no issues in regards to, um, the special event program um, with this employer, then we would, uh, allow for them to continue. If within the sixty days trial period, period, um, there's any issues in regards to quality of life, then we will revert to, um, uh, the ten PM.
Is there a residential, um, area over here off of eighty-four near it? I, I, I know that there's a lot of industrial or businesses and hotels and stuff, but I'm, I'm not sure with that specific.
It's, I'm, I'm sorry, Mary. Yes, it's, it's pretty much, um, hotels, other bars, um, you know, businesses and industrials. But we're going to keep monitoring to make sure that there's no quality of life to residents or, or other hotels in the vicinity.
Mayor, I, Mayor, I think there's somebody from the audience that did wish to speak from another hotel. I saw his name earlier on there. You can see if he's here to speak.
On what, on this?
Uh, yes.
It's, it's part of what, of?
Of this, of this bike night application. I think somebody from an adjoining hotel wanted to speak. I don't know if he's still here.
Uh, do you know his name? I don't see him. I mean, I don't know what I'm looking for.
I don't see that either.
Someone had their hand up, but I thought it was for citizens' comments. If there's anyone wishing to speak o- on behalf of this, if you could please raise your hand. And while we wait on that, uh, are there any, oh, oh, wait, I saw him and he's gone again. I saw a hand. Okay, keep your hand up, please.
And I, I don't know, like.
I, I hear you. Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Are you here for the Marina?
Marina Eighty-Four, yes.
Excuse me?
Yes, I am, uh, Rajiv Pandey from, uh, behalf of Marina Eighty-Four.
Oh, okay.
So I like to say, uh, a few words to the commission and city, uh, if you guys allow me to say that.
Absolutely.
First of all, I like to say, Shimika McQ, uh, uh, you're one of the asset of the city. I don't want to say that too much, but she's been with Eleanor, been very kind to accommodate and guide us to the difficult situation we are in, in a restaurant business. Uh, they are outstanding over there and helping us step by step how we can. And they've been truly generally care and effort from their side. I really appreciate, uh, along with the city manager as well, uh, Anna Garcia as well. And beside that, we run a very clean operation in this restaurant. We've been here for six years. I am myself a corporate guy. Before opening my own company, I was running a billion dollar asset in Miami Beach, uh, ten hotels. Uh, COVID bring us down like coming down from thirty-five thousand, uh, square feet, uh, thirty-five thousand, uh, feet high all the way to the ground. Uh, we are a small company, a small business. We have one restaurant here, one in South Miami as well. COVID happened. We did not lay off a single manager, because I don't see as a line employees. I see them as my own personal, my own, um, own family member. So we are trying to survive and I cannot thank enough to, uh, Eleanor, uh, uh, McQ and the city manager to helping and guiding through, uh, to this, uh, difficult time. And, uh, all we want is to, just to have chance to how to take care of, because the bike night or whatever event we do is not about that. This restaurant employs fifty employees. It's not only that, rest of the vendor, those who come in for that night to help them, their family and whatnot as well. That's the reason we want this event to keep going. We have only one, and Mayor, you're right. This area is an industrial area, middle of nowhere, next to everywhere. And, uh, we don't have any issue with any, anybody. Only one person next door, which is Red Carpet Inn Hotel, is there and that's the only one person always have issues. And we are back, big supporter of, uh, BSO as well. We always have them on, uh, whenever we have a bike night as well over here. So we do our best to run the operation the way it is need to be run, because we need to, right now, just whatever it takes. Even a single penny coming in helps me to float around to go through this difficult time. So I really appreciate that the city helping us genuinely. It's not that, oh, we're gonna help you, Raj, generally helping us to take care of this, uh, this event. So I really appreciate all of you guys.
Thank you so much and good luck.
Thank you.
Um, do we have a motion in a second?
I'm moved to approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Special event request for the Vintage Motorcycle Show. Do you have any issues?
Not at all, Mayor. Um, all staff signed off on it, as well as the rest of the special events that you see on your report.
Pass it there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Um, special event request from Ragnar Florida Sprint Twenty Twenty-Two Relay Race.
Absolutely, Mayor. Again, we went over everything with our Parks Director and the other department directors. We're very excited about this event, um, and we seek your support and approval.
Motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Uh, special event request for the Lions Club Moonlight Car Show.
Mayor, uh, same thing with this. Um, we've gone through all the department director. Um, everything has been addressed and we ask for your, your support and approval of this event.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Special event request, um, for the recurring event said Dania Point. Motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Special event request for the Jewish Holiday. Motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor? You want to oppose? Awesome. Thank you. You're welcome. Next we will have, um, the two proclamations from the Broward Mental Health Summit Day and Pastor Ricky Young Appreciation. I'll start with Broward Mental Health Summit Day. I know that it was someone. Um, Tom, do you have the, the person that wanted to speak on behalf of this after I finish? Reading it? Okay, I think I see. All right. Proclamation reads, whereas mental illness affects thoughts, feelings, behaviors, behaviors and general interaction with others and the stigma associated with mental illness must be addressed so that no one feels shame or disgrace in seeking help and treatment. And whereas recent tragedies in Broward County and nationwide require that our communities engage in meaningful education and discussion to identify the early signs of mental illness in order to take charge of the situation and reverse it before it gets worse. And whereas in addition to the recent tragedies, according to the April twenty-twenty data brief of the CDC's National Center for Health Statistics, in twenty eighteen, there were forty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-four recorded suicides in the United States. And the annual suicide rate has increased by thirty-five percent between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and eighteen. According to the Foundation for Suicide Prevention, on average, there are one hundred and twenty-three suicides per day in the United States. And whereas in response to the need for identifying and treating mental illness, a grassroots effort was undertaken by the principal mental health providers in Broward County, including county, federal government, private sector and nonprofit organizations to join forces in a historic effort to increase awareness and education by holding in-person and virtual summit open to the general public for free during the twenty-twenty-one National Suicide Prevention Week. And whereas the fourth annual Broward Mental Health Summit title, bouncing back together, wellness, empowerment, resilience and connection, is presented by Memorial Healthcare System, UKG and the Sheriff's Foundation of Broward County, bringing together the leading mental health providers in South Florida from county and federal government, private practice, nonprofits and academia to discuss and examine the current issues relating to mental health in Broward County affecting all populations. And whereas everyone wanting to learn about the mental health issues facing our communities, whether you are a healthcare provider, first responder, community leader, business owner, elected official, or just simply a concerned citizen, you will from, you will from the free in-person and virtual fourth annual Broward Mental Health Summit, information tools and a better understanding of the challenges affecting those with mental health issues. By acknowledging all of those who have been affected by mental illness, we help the general public understand its effects on, on the citizens of the city of Dania Beach. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I, Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim Thursday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-one as Broward Mental Health Summit Day in the city of Dania Beach and confirm our commitment to raising awareness in order to combat stigma and educate our community about mental illness. And we do have, we did have, before I was reading, the young lady online to kind of speak a little. Oh, I see you now. Okay, I'm going crazy. Simone Edwards.
Yes, thank you so much, Mary James, and thank you, the commission, and thank you to the city of Dania Beach. I'm Simone Edwards. I'm actually just, to give you a quick background, I'm a licensed clinical social worker and I work as a suicide prevention coordinator with Department of Veteran Affairs through the Miami VA. And I'm based here in our Broward Clinic of Commercial and Nob. I've been with the committee since the inception of the Broward Mental Health Summit. We are trying every year to grow, to really reach out to the public, to get everyone involved. Because mental health, suicide prevention, we use the mantra as everybody's business. We just want people to start to feel comfortable to talk about it. And we're so excited when our cities recognize it and are willing to have their citizens be aware of what's out there. Just a quick addition, we had originally hoped to have some limited in-person and then the rest do a virtual stream, but because of the cases and the rise in COVID, we've decided to go full virtual. So on the day of the summit, it would be a live stream. So our audiences will be able to ask questions virtually and be responding to at the time. So we're very proud of that, that we were able to do that. Our panelists will be there live, um, just alone in the conference room, you know, distanced and everything and be there to educate and help. And hopefully, uh, all our participants will have a great time. We're really trying to have it be positive and really, you know, help people, like it said, bounce back. We continue to go through a very hard time, you know, mental health and just in our, in the crazy times of COVID and the impact it has on families, on children, on adults, you know, in our everyday lives. And we still have to deal with everyday stressors too on top of that. So we really want everyone to know we're here to support you. Please join in. And just a word from the VA, we're here for any veterans out there. Please reach out to us. We're, we're providing medical and psychiatric care for our veterans. We're doing in-person, video, phone. So we just want everyone to know you're not alone. There's a lot of resources and we aim to give that on the day of our summit also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, if you could, please send, um, each of us, including the city manager, um, the information for this. I would love to get it out to our residents and see if anyone would, you know, be able to benefit from this streaming resource. And thank you so much for your hard work.
Perfect. Um, Mayor James, would you like us to go ahead and send it to the city clerk? That's who has been communicating with us and he could ask it out?
Yes.
Will do.
Give it to the rest of us.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Uh, you too, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next proclamation is for Pastor Ricky Young. And it reads, I'm not sure if he's on, I don't think he's on, but it reads, whereas Pastor Ricky Young moved from Miami, Florida to Hollywood, Florida and then migrated to Dania Beach, Florida, where he and his family now reside. Pastor Young was ordained under the leadership of Pastor Anderson of New Jerusalem on March fourth, nineteen ninety-six. That's my pastor. After being led by God to, to form an outreach ministry for the people and community, Pastor Young became the pastor and teacher and overseer of Second Harvest International Outreach Ministries in Dania Beach and at his place of residence until he was led to open the doors of the ministry in Hollywood, Florida. And whereas Pastor Ricky Young led the ministry to be in action of giving, providing valued help and leading the people and community to a place in their lives where they could feel worthy, needed and able to do for themselves. He has provided church services, food, finances, clothing, transportation and hope to those who were fortunate and less fortunate. In the midst of going above and beyond, Pastor Ricky Young helped a secular jo, held a secular job at CSX Railroad, but tried to never miss an opportunity to be at the church to help someone. And whereas developing, after developing and serving the Hollywood community with the Food and Bread Ministry, Thanksgiving, Christmas and back to school drives, donations, he was led back to where he has started the Second Harvest International Outreach Ministries in Dania Beach, whereby two ministries, Bible Way Missionary Baptist Church and Second Harvest International Outreach Ministries were merged by the hand of God. And whereas the Thanksgiving drive scored from ten to fifteen baskets to forty baskets for donation throughout the co, community and donations. to forty baskets for donation throughout the community, and donations received went from one store donating provisions to three and four stores, and companies sending delivery trucks and provisions. Pastor Ricky Young touches lives wherever he goes, praying, spreading the gospel, feeding the hungry, and jumping at the chance to help anyone in need. And whereas Pastor Ricky Young is a very community-oriented person and believes in local activism, his beliefs are, what is right is right for everyone. He has worked various projects with the communities of Broward, Dade, and Okeechobee Counties to improve the quality of life. His missionary in, of work has taken him to Israel, Haiti, and many other countries to deliver God's word in various cultures. Now therefore, on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, I Tamara James, Mayor of the City of Dania Beach, Florida, do hereby honor and recognize Pastor Ricky Young for his service to the community and for being a pillar of the city of Dania Beach. He has proven to stand in the gap for others, is a man of respect, ethics, and dignity, and is loyal and dedicated to helping mankind. Thank you. We'll move right along to citizens' comments. Have a few. If you are an attendee or in attendance and you would like to address the commission, please use your raise the hand tool, and I will be able to recognize you shortly. First, we have Linda Wilson, resident friends of the library, Dania Beach, Florida. Linda. I don't see them. Oh, I see her now.
I, I have no visual because my computer freezes up whenever I go. I, I did, I, I made one of my comments already at the CRA meeting, and I just wanted to reinforce what I said about you cast that special event request on item number seven of, of number three. But that is a concern as far as conflict of interest on the same dates, uh, for their events, and your Dania After Dark and not in whole. The CACAB met shortly afterwards in a special meeting, uh, after the last commission meeting and after the workshop event, and, uh, was starting to work on our qualifications for the CACAB members, which we will be bringing back to you so that you can, can, uh, you can see what we think is important for the CACAB as it relates to membership. So, but in addition to that, I wanted to say, um, that if you have not yet, there is a public art survey that was taken by the, the committee and the consultant for the Public Arts Committee. And I'm, I don't know whether any of you ever looked at it. It's seventy-three pages long. And, um, I took the time to go through it because we discussed this at our special meeting. And just to bring it to your attention, there were a hundred and seventy-three responses. Of those, zip code three, three, zero, zero, four, there were a hundred and two. In three, three, one, one, three, 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 one, two, one, four, and one, six, there were fifty-five additional responses. The top, uh, concerns were the beach, which was eighty-nine. Uh, the second top concern was roadways and transit corridors for, this is all for public arts, okay? Neighborhoods, sixty-four. Uh, on the roadways and transit, that was a hundred and thirty-three responses. Mister Properties, fifty-four responses. And, uh, some of the questions which I felt were very poignant were, are you interested in serving on the Public Arts Committee? There were seventy-five responses, yes, to a hundred and seventy-three replies. What type of art do you prefer? Fifty-eight of one hundred and seventy-three murals. There was one for statuary. So I, I think that's worthwhile for you to maybe have your board who is overseeing this to give you a summary of some of these things, so that when you do in fact do some fine mining on how the, that, uh, committee is going to work and how the CACAB may work with them, and what they should be considering. This is very, very impactful, and I, I hope that they provide it to you so that it's easy enough for you to understand. It was a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Um. I, I, I'm gonna comment, uh, ask the city manager to comment very briefly on the Dania After Dark and the, um, and the events at Dania Point, because I know there may be some overlapping. Um, so if you could speak on that very briefly, city manager?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, we're, we're a, a growing city. I anticipate that we're going to be hovering close to the forty thousand mark once we get our, um, the information, uh, sent to us for the census in September. Um, and I see us as a city within the next couple of years of being hovering close to forty-five, fifty thousand. I'm not aware of any conflicts, um, none of the staff members mentioned. I think it's a, it's a win-win when we have a lot going on in the city because people can move from one place to another. We can certainly work with, um, at Daniel Point and the other venues, um, to let everybody know, hey, we have Dania After Dark and, and vice versa, so folks can move around throughout the city, but no one saw it as an issue or a problem.
Thank you.
My pleasure, Mayor.
Thank you, Linda. Jose Armand. Jose, are you there? Are you able to? Speak?
Okay. I'm here.
There you go.
And, um, I also have a camera supposed to be working, but anyway, while, while you, um, work that out, I'll just, go ahead. Um. You don't want to see me. I'll, I'll just talk into the microphone, okay? Is that all right?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Fifty Southeast Third Avenue, Dania Beach.
Awesome.
Next month will be two years since the office of the mayor, then under the firm and steady hand of Mayor Lori Lawellin, issued a Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation on behalf of the Dania Beach City Commission, encouraging all citizens to celebrate the contributions that Hispanics have made to the world, to our country, and our community. The twenty nineteen City Commission proclamation notes, the effective date expanded by President Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty-day period starting on September fifteenth and ending on October fifteenth. Latino Ensemble, the performing arts organization where I serve as its artistic producing director, was in pre-production for a stage reading of my one-act play, Thrill Me to Death, slated for May of last year at Chaplain Gourmet Market. Unfortunately, due to the COVID, city's lockdown, COVID-nineteen lockdown, all plans had to be indefinitely postponed, tabled, is the jargon we use here. Broadway was shut down for over a year with most shows reopening this September. Theater, being the live animal that it is, needs a live audience to feed on, not a virtual one. Mutual interaction doesn't play well on Zoom. Latino Ensemble is assessing when and where to proceed. Like many other businesses that fell prey to the pandemic, Chaplain Cafe has permanently closed its doors. The press release announcing the twenty twenty-one Hispanic Heritage Month Observance Theme, and I quote, Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope, unquote. Esperanza, of course, is Spanish for hope. The presser continues, quote, "The theme invites us to celebrate Hispanic heritage and to reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and hold on to our hope. It encourages us to reflect on all of the contributions Hispanics have made in the past and will continue to make in the future. It is also a reminder that we are stronger together," end of quote. Locally Brow, Broward County has announced a variety of programs to celebrate the yet again COVID-stricken festivities. Uh, please let us know if there are any events around town that the city commission is sponsoring, or if they have been tabled to COVID-nineteen. And say, Wayne, right along to, uh, the meeting three weeks ago, um, the budget meeting. Uh, I, I have a, a, a question. There were, uh, I just heard this, there was a discussion that some funds were available for local organizations. At the top of my head, I think there, there was about twenty and, uh, maybe five thousand dollars was talked about giving to each organization. Now, um, what I, I am curious as to the outreach that was made for this, because Latino Ensemble, we would have certainly been very, uh, interested in participating. So I would like to know how, how this was publicized. We didn't get the memo. And also, um, there was a, a discussion, if I remember correctly, that City Manager Garcia was to draft or was tasked to come up with guidelines for an application process. That was three weeks ago. So, uh, I'll take your questions regarding Hispanic Heritage Month and regarding my question, if I can get any answers. Mayor?
Uh, yeah, um, I would love to provide you with the proclamation if you would, uh, refer for Hispanic, his, um, his Heritage Month, sorry. Um, so if you could please provide me with that proclamation, I would be sure to get that on the next agenda for you. As far as the charitable donations and contributions that you are referring to, I am going to defer to, um, our city manager to see how it was, um, publicized, because I don't have the answer to that.
Basically, um, we were coming, uh, to the September meeting, um, to recommend some criteria. I know that that was one of the questions that Mr. Armand has. In regards to, to publicizing, we didn't publicize it. Um, we just went through the regular budget process that we go through every year. Um, and the folks who, um, who, who did, um, reach out to us and, and fill out an application, they did it on their own based on what they've done in the city, um, in the past.
Okay. Um, thank you, um, Armand. I, I know that that isn't ideal, and I, I can tell you, because we hadn't funded it the, the previous year, I, I I didn't even fill it out for my organization as well, because I didn't know that we were going to fund it, but we did have, um, those few organizations that still went out and, and filled out the applications. And so, um, that, that is how we get to this point. Right?
I'd just like to say for the record that I think that is unfair to award, uh, these funds to organizations uh, that were able to target you, to get in contact with you, and that there was no word out to the communities, to local organizations that this program existed. We are a startup, um, uh, nonprofit, and we really need all the breaks that we can get. So, um, in any case, I'll just put that out there. I look forward, um, I don't know how I contact, can contact you for next year, since, you know, I don't know if you're gonna put out any memos or any, we will publicize it for next year, or should I just contact?
I, I think if we start to publicize it, we will get overwhelmed with the amount of, um, requests. What I would recommend is that you just continue to apply for it, even if we choose or, or don't choose. But this actually is very good commentary for you to, for us to be able to go back into our budget discussions and discuss, um, further options on this. Uh, I do see Commissioner Lawellin's hand raised, so I'm gonna allow her to speak.
Oh. I just wanted to make a comment on the, um, proclamation that, uh, Armand was mentioning. Um, we, I did one the last two years, and so there is one in the system already that can probably just be tweaked and updated so that it can be read for this year.
Sure, yes, yes, yes. I, I'll get with Armand and, and, and do that. So if it's any changes that he wishes to make, I definitely will do that. Thanks. Thank you, Armand.
All right, thank you. Hopefully next time I can get on camera.
Yeah, probably need an upgrade on that phone.
My camera was, was working. I'm not on the phone. I'm on the, on my, um, computer.
Oh.
I tested it. I, it was working.
But we'll always love to see your face.
Okay, dear. Thank you so much, Mayor James.
No problem. Um, Pastor Jonathan Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Commission. Um, thank you so much for the work that you all do in serving our community. I just wanted to speak on.
Um, name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. I'm sorry. Jonathan Thomas, um, one eighty East Dania Beach Boulevard, uh, great city of Dania Beach. Um, I wanted to, uh, uh, sha, shine some light on, uh, one of the items, um, I believe seven point four, if I'm not mistaken. Um, regarding the, um, Dania Beach Boulevard, West Dania Beach Boulevard, um, uh, Boulevard corridor from US one to Bryant Road. So I'm reading some of the stuff that is on there. One of the, uh, important things that I want to point out is the bridge over Sea Ten Canal. Um, that is something that I know, uh, was spoken about before, uh, that the residents in that area was very concerned about and did not want to happen. Um, however, it is up, I guess, for discussion or, uh, to be moved or pushed through, uh, depending on what you all decide as far as the consent agenda. Um, and just wanted to shine some light on that too. Uh, this isn't something that the residents want. Again, this is a residential area, as you all fairly know. Um, and there has been significant development over there. And to now put a bridge or to even speak about putting a bridge over there, what is the need? My question would be, when there are several other roads that will lead to, uh, from US one to, uh, Bryant Road, um, so what is the significance of that, and do we really want to disrupt that community um, with now putting a canal over there? So just wanted to shine some light on that and see what has been done. Has there been a new discovery uh, with the residents over there that they are for this? Um, what has been done to now bring this back? Because this was something that was spoken of before.
Um, I was actually gonna pull that item or I am going to pull that item, so you'll be able to hear some of the, um, discussion with that. Uh, that is, that's not a city project. It is an NPO project. Um, and it would, would it be funded from the city? It will be funded from the NPO. And I do have this. It says, uh, commitment twenty, twenty forty-five. Um, and I, I have some, similar questions a, as you have, because I know this has been a topic of discussion um, for a few years now. So, uh, thank you for shining that light, and I, I'll wait for my comments until we get to the consent agenda. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um. Nine, five, four, nine, two, one, nine, nine, two, eight. I believe that is Mr. Collins, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, Rodney Collins again.
How are you?
Twenty-four Southwest Fifth Avenue, Dania Beach, Florida.
Thank you.
I want to discuss, uh, the same thing that Pastor Thomas discussed, that is, um, item four under the consent, uh, agenda. The, uh, resolution, uh, uh, twenty twenty-one dash one twenty. And this, of course, is the consent by the city of Dania for the, uh, uh, approval to the Metropolitan, uh, Planning Organization, uh, for the city of, projects in the city of Dania, which includes the, uh, bridge over, uh, the Sea Ten Canal on Dania Beach Boulevard. Um. This bridge is the bridge from hell. It keeps resurfacing after everybody has thought that it was dead. I'm concerned that not only is the community against this, but every time we kill it, the Metropolitan Planning Assos, uh, uh, organization, uh, resurfaces it. Now I understand that they, uh, will pay for this. This is not a city of Dania, uh, 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 financial commitment at all. However, the Metropolitan, uh, Planning Organization, I've never seen them send anybody into my community, and I live near that, uh, 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 canal and stuff, that, uh, tells me what we want to do and what we want to have, or why. We have a bridge across the Sea Ten Canal at, uh, Northwest First Avenue. It exists, has existed for many, many years. Why are we putting another bridge there? Are we gonna have two bridges, uh, to cross that Sea Ten Canal from my community, or what? Now I understand also, because I think everybody, all the cities do it, we have a liaison, uh, city commissioner with the, uh, Metropolitan, uh, Planning Organization. Why wasn't our city com, uh, why wasn't our city liaison, uh, there to tell us that this project had resurfaced again? I don't understand how the communication has broken down where we don't know things, and we find out about it when they put in a, a, a resolution, uh, of, you know, consent, asking the city to consent to, uh, uh, having this thing done. Now, there are some worthy items on that, uh, prod, on, on that list, but that bridge is not one of them. And I want some answers as to how this bridge keeps coming back and why the city of Dania is not making sure by either attending the Metropolitan, uh, Planning Organization meetings or the liaison informing the community that this is something that will affect some. That, that bridge will not affect everybody, but the number of cars coming through my community on Dania Beach Boulevard to get across that canal to Dania Point and everything else that leads you to Brian Road and in on to, uh, Sterling Road or even Old Griffin, something is not clean in the water and we need to clean this up.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Again, I'll, uh, share, share my comments and a lot of our other discussion will happen, um-
I hope that Mayor, I hope that you're not the only one that's gonna comment because there's something wrong here. Either people are not aware on the commission or they simply don't care or at last they want that bridge. So that's what I'm trying to say, you know, your comments are interesting, but you guys, you only have one vote. If all other four vote for it, that bridge is gonna stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Um, Janet? Please, yes, address for the record.
A quick question. Do I have to wait for the public hearing part of my, um, concern? Or is this the time where I speak now?
Oh, no, you, you'll have to wait. I have yours. Is this with Terrell?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I have your, your-
So I'll wait then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public safety reports. Captain Marks?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
From seven twenty-nine through eight eleven, we've responded to the following crimes. Three aggravated assaults, one aggravated battery, four auto thefts, one burglary business, ten burglary conveyances, three burglary residences, one robbery, ten thefts, five motor vehicle thefts, or five thefts of motor vehicle parts and five shoplifting calls. We've had a decrease of two burglary residences and a decrease of one robbery. We've made fifty-six arrests. One was for a, a vehicle theft where a deputy observed a subject exit the Grand Motel and enter the driver's seat of a vehicle which was stolen out of Miami. The subject spontaneously uttered, "I did not steal it" and he was arrested. Another vehicle theft, the deputy observed a white van stolen out of Boca Raton traveling northbound on federal highway. Aviation assisted in tracking the vehicle. The occupants bailed out of the vehicle but were detained and arrested shortly thereafter. Another vehicle theft where a deputy located a vehicle stolen out of Fort Lauderdale in reference to an LPR hit. The subject bailed out of the vehicle. A perimeter was established and with the assistance of K-9, the driver was located and arrested. Now these are all the, the license plate readers that, that the commission approved and they are coming in handy. Our crime suppression team has recovered four stolen vehicles resulting in five arrests. They also seized one firearm, forty-eight grams of oxycodone, fifty-nine grams of marijuana, four grams of fentanyl and five grams of cocaine. Our criminal investigations unit made an arrest for fraud and grand theft. A suspect was arrested as a result of an unrelated traffic stop in Dania Beach. Further investigation revealed an out of custody probable cause affidavit for her arrest. The subject was transported and booked at the main jail. We had a burglary and decent exposure arrest. A suspect arrived at the Chevron gas station and began harassing the victim, which was the employee, and exposing his genitals multiple times to her. The suspect exited the store and while restricted from coming back in due to the victim locking all the doors for safety, he entered the victim's vehicle parked out in front of the store and ransacked her personal property. In attempts to be transported to the main jail by our deputies, the suspect was also charged with resisting arrest without violence, resisting arrest with violence and assault and battery on a law enforcement officer. We had a shoplifting where suspects arrived at the TJ Maxx in Dania Point. One suspect entered the store to steal items while the other waited in the vehicle for him to return with the stolen items and drive away. A male and female suspect were charged accordingly and subsequently transported to the main jail. We had a domestic battery where a suspect attacked his girlfriend at the residence and subsequently continued his act by following her in a vehicle which she attempted to flee. The suspect was located and charged accordingly for aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, domestic violence, throwing a deadly missile into a dwelling, battery, burglary with a battery, an additional charge of battery and criminal mischief. He was subsequently transported to the main jail. We had a vehicle theft where a stolen vehicle was located in a Saratoga apartment parking lot. A traffic stop was conducted and the driver was arrested. After being read his rights, the subject confessed to stealing the vehicle from a location in Dania Beach on eight one twenty-one. With the beginning of school, uh, our traffic unit has been extremely busy. Uh, we've continued to monitor Southeast Fifth Ave. We ramped up our enforcement on federal highway. Uh, we issued twenty, one hundred twenty-two citations in reference to Operation Summer Splash. We also conducted a Dania Beach operational plan for Operation Safe Streets and Crash Prevention, which resulted in additional hundred fifty citations slash warnings that were issued. We made five arrests, three for felony narcotics, one for stolen vehicle and narcotics and one warrant. Our homeless outreach team finalized the relocation of one of our wheelchair-bound chronic homeless to an assisted living facility. We continued checks at our city parks for city ordinance violations and we scheduled an appointment at admission to Bark for one of our newer homeless clients. And in closing, please don't forget our Shred-a-thon and Operation Medicine Cabinet coming up on September eleventh at Bass Pro Shops and that's from ten AM to one PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I have a question, uh, Captain Marks. As far as your point, what does their security do? Because I only see them kind of like drive around in little cars, but are they responding to any of these things or are they not able to?
They, they really can't. Um, any, security is a, a deterrent. It's a good deterrent and a communication with law enforcement. They have to call us for, for anything that, that takes place unless they can handle it or, or if it's just a trespassing and they say, hey, please leave and they leave, but if they don't leave, they have to call us. So they, 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 they can only respond to, i- it's mainly a deterrent. They have to call us for any crimes or any, any issues they're having.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you and thank you for, um, also, uh, you know, putting that eye in the sky different places. And I know that a lot of us are overwhelming you with a lot of different calls, with a lot of different areas of concern, especially since school has started and also want to thank, um, the city manager and Eric. And I know I'm gonna pull this item, um, as well with our parks. It really has made a difference and definitely investing in camera systems and different types of license plate readers is very beneficial. So I, I wouldn't be surprised if we are going to ask for another one of some sort. I know that we had a conversation, um, you, myself and the city manager with, um, possibly, uh, purchasing another one of those, maybe Eye in the Skies or cameras because, uh, they, they really are a deterrent and they really do work. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I've been, I've been working with the manager regularly and speaking to her and, uh, we're putting a plan in place to get somewhere.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief Fallafar?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners and all our fine citizens in Dania Beach. Uh, I'd like to start off by, uh, just letting you know that our fire station's crews this summer, they spent some time going around the summer camps and having fun with the kids, um, spending time with them. Um, a couple of weeks ago, they went around to, uh, Lighthouse Church and, uh, they had a good session with the kids there where they were teaching the kids all about the fire truck, but more importantly, teaching them about tools, how to use the tools and, um, how to, how to, uh, work different tools. So they had a great time doing that and the kids enjoyed it. The lifeguards, um, at Dania Beach, I'd like to thank, uh, Eric Brown and Mike Cock and his team because they had another, uh, save on the beach with, uh, AED patient where they were able, uh, help somebody, uh, save somebody's life. So, um, you know, my regards to them. They're, they're the first ones out there and, uh, without them, we wouldn't be able to do our job. So, so thank you to that whole team. Uh, we also conducted, uh, fire drills at the different city facilities. We did one at City Hall. Uh, we did one at the different parks and, um, everyone, everything went pretty smooth and, uh, we learned a few things and, uh, we'll, uh, make a couple of changes. But, uh, this was part of the safety committee that we've been involved with, trying to get things, uh, set up and working, uh, even better than they were before. Our, um, our station crews ran a total of eight hundred and eight calls over the last month. Uh, two hundred and eighty-six of them came out of Station Seventeen, five hundred and twenty-two responses came out of Station One. And our fire inspectors are, um, ninety-three point seven percent complete in all their, uh, fire inspections for the year. So our team is just working hard and getting, getting things done. Uh, finally, I want to thank, um, the city and that meaning you all, Commissioners, City Manager and the team, uh, because, um, our AC unit went down in Station One and it, it was hot for a day, but we were able to, uh, get a brand new AC unit, uh, uh, fairly quickly. And, um, our, our firefighters, thank you because it's, uh, it would be a little bit miserable right now if they weren't able to come back to a nice cool station. So, uh, with that, um, do you have any questions for me?
No, just want to thank you. I know it's been a very busy, uh, month for both-
Yes, it has.
-publicly combined and you all are doing a great job. So I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we have consent agendas outside of seven point four and seven point ten. Do we have any polls? And do we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of seven point four and seven point ten.
You have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Go ahead, Tom.
Seven four, resolution of the City Commission of the city of Dania Beach, Florida, supporting Broward County Metropolitan Planning Organizations, the NPOs, commitment two thousand forty-five Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the MTP, and the city of Dania Beach project identified in such plan. Running for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, sponsored by Community Development.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I'm, I'm pulling this, uh, um, item. And not because I'm not in support of the, the transportation plan, but I definitely am not in support of the bridge. Um, for obvious reasons, it's been very, a very contentious, um, item for years and years before I was even on this commission. And, um, again, I, I know that we removed it from our budget on our documents the last year, but, um, this community has not been, um, notified or neither, nor have they been asked for their input on how, and how this will affect, um, that neighborhood. I know for sure that it would displace some of those residents over there. Um, and I am asking, because I went through all of these, and so I, I am asking for me that, that this one be removed from our support. The, the item is asking or stating that we are supporting this item and, um, this is not one of the projects that I wish to support at this time because there is, there's not, um, any support or not a significant amount of support or communication or input from that community. And, um, as we all know, when we bring projects forward and we support certain projects, regardless if it's in my area, your area or just the entire city, we, we hear from the residents and, uh, certain communities, their, their voices kind of matter. And, um, I'm asking that the voices in this community matter, but we can't really hear the voices because there hasn't been meetings. This has not been brought up recently in the past, uh, few years to anyone in this community because I live in the community. So I know it hasn't really been brought up. So I'm asking that we do not support this one project because we don't have, um, the information from the community to be able to support this. It, it was never supported and it's still not supported. Um, and so I'm asking for the removal of, so we can amend this resolution to take out this one project. Go ahead, Commissioner Davis, and I see Commissioner, um, Llewellyn, I mean, Odmann. You need?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm not as familiar with the history of this project as, as I think many of you, um, may have a little bit more history than I do. Um, I do know that this is the NPO and not the city. So I would like to get more information at least from our liaison or, you know, to talk about or just to give some further detail and some further information. This is something that, you know, um, it's, for me, at this time, I just need more information on it. And, uh, I would just like to hear what the recommendation from the NPO is and, um, if we could just get a little further insight on it, then I greatly appreciate that.
Okay, Commissioner Llewellyn, you want to answer?
Happy to. Um, so this project has been discussed for many years. Um, it is not a new project. It has never been removed from the list of projects. It has always been on the project list with the NPO, um, and therefore it's also been funded. And the, although I appreciate the fact that, that, that there are some members of the community that are opposed to it, there are also other members of the community that are for it, who I have spoken with. Um, so this is not a, um, a hundred percent of the neighborhood is against it. Um, I know, uh, Mayor, you indicated that you were concerned about people being displaced. That is something that I have asked about specifically and I was told that, that, that there would not be a need for people to be displaced with this project, that there are ways that there are, there are things that can be done through engineering that would not require anybody to be displaced. I realize that the house that's on the end of the street there is somebody that's related to you and so you might be a little more sensitive to it. But the bottom line is, is that this is not something that is going to displace residents. And the individuals at the NPO who make these decisions, who decide which projects they think are appropriate, are doing it based upon an overall assessment. They have engineers, they have architects. There are lots of subject matter experts who are looking at what's the best way to help with reducing traffic and mitigating the traffic and helping the infrastructure. One of the concerns that I know has been brought up on numerous occasions is the fact that the traffic on Northwest First Street has increased significantly since Dania Point came in. Um, that's traffic that's going directly past CW Thomas Park, which as you know, we are, uh, we have budgeted to do significant improvements to so that it's not only going to be an increase in traffic for people going out to Brian Road, but they're going to be going past CW Thomas Park and they don't have another option to go straight back to Brian Road. And there's going to be more people at CW Thomas Park because of all of the, the facilities and all the upgrades that are being done there. Um, also, the item is not just strictly for the bridge. It's for other improvements along West Dania Beach Boulevard. So it, that's only a piece of it. But this is something that has been gone on for many, many years. It is not something that has been approved in full. It is just a matter of, this is a protocol. This is kind of what happens when there are projects that are there for your individual city. You are requested to, to adopt and approve the list by the NPO. They then have to bring it to the county and get approval from the county. So it's not a done deal. It's simply a matter of protocol and it's a matter of procedure and that's all it is. But there are reasons why they've done this and this is, that's, you know, we have subject matter experts in this field that have done studies and have looked at the issues that go on with traffic and infrastructure and that's the reason why they do this. So, you know, and it has been a controversial issue. I'm not going to dispute that, but it's been controversial, controversial because there are people in the neighborhood who do want this project. Many of them are, quite frankly, not comfortable with coming forward because they feel that they're going to be bullied or pushed around in some way for, for voicing their opinions. So, you know, that's, that's the information that I've been given. So I don't know what else to tell you, but, um, I, I trust my subject matter experts. I am not an engineer. I am listening to them and this is what they are recommending.
Thank you. Um, before, oh, Commissioner Odmann, I'll let you go and then I'll respond.
Thank you. Um, can you guys hear me okay? I don't know how my audio is.
I can hear you.
Enough? Okay. So, um, you know, we keep talking about how this item has been around for, forever. And I remember, I'll never ever forget this, when I first decided to run, you know, you get paraded around and- And I remember, I'll never ever forget this, when I first decided to run, you know, you get paraded around and you meet all the stakeholders and all the people who are building stuff and all the people who are investing big money in Dana Beach. So you go around, if you're trying to get elected and you tell them a little bit about yourself and you say some things you want to know about. One of the things I wanted to know about was their feelings on gentrification. So many of these people, when I would cite maybe an example of what I thought gentrification was, would correct me. And they would use this project to, these were people who were building. These were developers in our city and I won't say their name because I don't want my house to burn down. And they would use this project as an example of what gentrification really was. And this was more than one developer. And I will never forget it because I was like, dang, okay. And I re, and these were people, different industries, didn't even know each other, didn't like each other, had nothing to do with that neighborhood, other than they were building stuff around and in that neighborhood in, in Dana Beach and had significant pots of money invested in Dana Beach. And so these were experts and these were people who had talked to experts and really understood it. And so then, you know, I really, really researched this, this project. I researched the heck out of gentrification. And in my head, this was really a way for me to deeply understand how in other parts of Florida, and I won't go all into it, the people who know more and better than I am, but how this has been done over and over in different places in Florida and all over the country and how this bridge, while small, it would still be used to have a negative impact on this, on this neighborhood. So if there are people that do support this project, I would think it's in that neighborhood, it may just be a lack of education. But any real socie, experts in sociology, in urban planning, will tell you that this is a textbook example of how to denigrate a neighborhood and that is, this is, this is not a good idea. And so I will never support this project. And I would be thrilled if the commission as a whole could write a letter to the MPO and let them know that all of us collectively do not want this project for our neighborhoods and we do not want it for Dana Beach. And there are other solutions for, for some of the traffic issues and things like that. But this is not the solution and it never ever will be. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I am an elected official who's been elected by far margins each time I've been elected to serve our residents in all of the City of Dana Beach. And my track record speaks for itself. Meaning that I have voted against projects four to one, out west, on the east, and the northwest section. So to insinuate, because I, I am related to a deacon, to the church that you reside, Commissioner Luella, speaks a lack of professionalism. I would do the same if I was related to him or if I were not related to him. The relation has nothing to do with the overall impacts of that community. I know a couple, a few people that support it and they don't live in that community. They live on the other side of Sterling Road. I, you could not name one person that lives in the community that I live in and that comes to the Homeowners Association meetings that I attend to say that they have supported this issue. And furthermore, I think that this raises a bigger concern of you being in liaison and speaking on behalf of the entire commission on things that is just protocol. It's, it's more than just protocol. When it comes to your community and it was a project that you did not want to support and we unanimously supported your decision out west, it wasn't just a protocol. You were passionate, you were advocating for your areas. We all live in different areas and I think that's amazing because we're all able to advocate differently for the areas that we live in. And I would appreciate if we don't say, because you're related, you're more sensitive. I'm sensitive because this is an area that I was born and raised in and I'm seeing it drastically change. And I'm seeing sixteen-story developments approved in one area where ninety, a hundred percent of the residents in that community did not want it. And on the other hand, you have a three-story development that was tabled because of the same concerns. So I would just appreciate the same level of concern in all of the neighborhoods. And this is not just protocol. This is something saying that this commission is signing off on these projects. And again, I can't, I, I understand this is bigger or just more than just one project. But this one project could definitely change the face of our communities. We already have a bridge on Northwest First Street. So logically, one street over, to think that you're going to put another bridge there and both be open is not very logical to me. It tells me that they're going to close the one on Northwest First Street. I understand how this goes. I've been fighting this fight far before I ever thought of being an elected official. I've been very well-versed and, and involved in all of these, these decision makings for a very long time. So again, there, we're, we're not even on one accord here. So how we can go back and vouch and say, you know what, I want to just support this project with how, without having a conversation? How about you call a meeting and have a conversation with the community to see what they want? Because I don't know who isn't afraid to speak their minds. We've heard people speaking their minds over trees, tires and everything else and speed humps. So, one resident can't say that I bullied them because that's the intinuation for speaking their mind. I respect your opinion. It's your opinion. It's just not my opinion. So I just want to put on the record, anybody is free to speak how they feel on any project. And I just want to change the tone of this conversation because I don't want it to go left at all. Because we've done a very good job getting along and everything else, but the tone and accusations, it, it just has to stop. We're here to serve our residents. We're here to serve our community. We are not here to say, oh, this is the MPO's project and oh, well, this is just it. We are here for, to make decisions on behalf of Dana Beach. And in, in that, if we don't want a project, we don't have to have that project. This project was pulled, not from the MPO, but it was on the budget books last year. Because I remember asking for it to be removed and it was removed from the budget books. I understand that the funding isn't coming from the city. I understand that the project isn't necessarily coming from the city. But to have this paper that is three pages long and to say that we wholeheartedly support this, I don't think it is accurate. I don't think it is fair. And I think that before any considerations are made, there needs to be a lot of dialogue with the community that is going to affect. Those are the people that it's going to affect. It's not going to affect the MPO. It's not going to affect the developers. It's going to affect the very people that live in these communities. So again, obviously, I, I, I'm not, I'm not going to speak for you, but I'm asking that this one project be removed from our support for the entire thing until, at least until you have a conversation with that community to see that this is not what that community wants. Thank you. Any other comments from? Go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to know, since this project has been going on for years and years and years, has there been any documentation from the community in which this project is being placed? Has it, has, I mean, obviously, we, we're getting two different viewpoints of what is going on here. And so I just would like to know, since it's been in existence for so many years, if we have any data, surveys, anything about this project at all?
No, only the fact that it keeps coming up and saying that we want it and then the, and then the community comes to the meetings and say that they don't want it. I know that it's been presented, it was presented actually with Dana Point initially because they were going to pay for the design. And that was in turn, something that, you know, the community didn't want. So he pulled out, he pulled it out because he said, I don't want to, I don't want to go back and forth with the community. If it's not something they want, I was going to do it, but it's not something they want. They don't, you know, he wasn't going to do it. And that, that area, I think that land is not owned by either of the developers. It is, that's why with this sixty, eighty wave or ninety, whatever it's called, the wave project, that there is that land right there. And there has been a lot of discussions that they would be, have to displace four or five of those homes that are right, right before the patch or after the patch, which everyone's going west from the patch to, to the canal. They would have to displace them because they would have to open up the road. They would have to widen the road. And so those were conversations that were had. But again, all we know is that this is on a consent agenda. And this wasn't something that, you know, if this, if it was contentious, there should have been a conversation. There should have been a dialogue and there should have been more transparency than just putting it on consent and not thinking anyone was going to look at the backup. That's, that's my only issues, issues with this.
And do we have the rationale, because obviously the MPO does have the subject matter experts and the rationale for why they wanted to put this here, you know, in, in the first place. I know that when we were talking about the wave project, there was a lot of concern about the bridge and it not being stable and there were some other things that were going on there. I, I do understand that this is, would be a way, or maybe, I'm not sure, to mitigate the traffic by putting that bridge there so that you're not having all the traffic concentrated going directly on U S one. So, and, and away from the schools and away from C W Thomas Park. So I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering, is that part of the rationale for the MPO wanting to put that bridge there so it, it does not have all that concentrated traffic on, on, on Northwest First Street?
When I spoke to someone from the MPO a couple of years ago, they told me that because it would be a straight shot from the beach, the concerto, straight to Dana Point. That was the rationale. It wasn't necessarily the traffic that's going by our park. And when I asked the city manager, when I raised the question about, you know, the ability of the bridge with the, with the rave project, I was assured that the, the bridge is sturdy and there is nothing wrong with it. It just can't hold, I don't know, like fifteen tons or something like that at one sitting place and area. But that, that, the engineers and the subject experts said that that bridge is perfectly fine. But I will be going to the MPO meetings from now so I can hear what's going on. And, you know, I can get better clarification of, you know, the scope of the projects and, and so I can have my own understanding of that. Commissioner Luella?
So to answer Commissioner Davis's question, yes, there is, there, there is, that is part of the rationale. Because they are looking at the overall ways to mitigate traffic. That's exactly what this is about. It is mitigating traffic. That's what Metropolitan Planning Organization does. They look at infrastructure. They look at ways that they can help improve the flow of traffic. And this is one of those ways. They, there's no, there's been no mention of closing the Northwest First Street Bridge. We are putting in multi-millions of dollars into C W Thomas Park. That's going to end up bringing more people to this community. And more people are going to be driving through. Same thing with Collins. Collins is right over there and you, I mean, I see people, I see kids all the time crossing over there. And if you continue to just have this one route that's going through there, that's one of the concerns as well, is that you're going to, it's, it's just, it's a public safety issue as well. So there has been, this is not about trying to displace people. That's not what this is about. And although there may have been some discussion of it before, there are new ways of doing things. There have, there have been plenty of discussions about not having to displace people. That's not what this is about. That's really what the biggest argument has been in the past, has been about displacing the people that live there, which had to do with the gentrification issue. That's not something that, to my understanding, is going to happen. I have asked those questions. I have had several meetings. This is something that is much more appropriate and it's, and again, subject matter experts who deal with traffic. They deal with infrastructure. They deal with these, the planning overall. And that's what it's about. It's about giving another access route. So, you know, I, again, I understand the, the concern, but I'm trying to follow best practices. I'm trying to follow subject matter experts. I'm trying to listen to the people who know more about this than any of us do. Taking the feelings out of it and looking at what they are telling us would make the most sense. Because the last thing I want to see is that we end up having a situation where there's more traffic going down Northwest First Street and some child runs into the road from the park and gets hit because there's cars, there's too much traffic coming through. I, I mean, that's a concern for me. It's a concern for anybody who's involved in this type of work. So, I mean, it, this is not, it was, this is not something that's just simply being, it, it sounds like the implication is that the only reason why they want to do it is to help make money for somebody. And that's not what this is about. This is about the overall planning. That's what this is about. So also, you've got Saratoga that's there now, where you have two buildings already and a third coming. And there may be people that can't necessarily drive or don't drive and would be able to walk across a bridge there. So that's a factor as well. It would connect people to jobs. It would connect people to access other things that are not necessarily just in the neighborhood. You can actually go other places. So, you know, I, I don't, I, I'm not going to argue anything on this. Like I said, this is, this is something that is, I'm listening to subject matter experts who know about this. It's not about making it personal. It's certainly not personal. It shouldn't be personal. This is, it's just a matter of properly planning and trying to listen to the people who know what they're talking about. That's all.
Thank you. Right before you, Commissioner Oddman, I just know that, you know, there are kids everywhere. There are kids running all out of Saratoga, all out the hoo-ha. Those are low-income housing that is in all of those buildings. And we have the patch that is there as well. So they can walk a street over and go over the bridge. If that, if, if that's, if that's the notion, if they want to go over the bridge. But I am going to ask that we pull this item or pull this, this, the support of this, this bridge. Because I don't want to sit here all night. We just have, we have to move on. At some point in time, we have an agenda to go through. Commissioner Oddman?
Yeah, I'll just really quickly, I, I don't know where the feelings part keeps coming from. None of this is about feelings or emotions for me. This was about two developers and an architect telling me that this will, that this will contribute to tearing apart a neighborhood. But anyways, not about feelings. So, yeah, I, I, I support that to pull the project. I, I think it would be irresponsible and it will come back to haunt you if, if you don't take this off. So I am in support of that. I don't know if, I guess that was emotion, but that, that initiative.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I just want to see if there's anything that we can get from the MPO in writing. I think the biggest thing for me is about the displacement of the people. And I think that if, if we could settle that issue about whether or not these residents would be displaced, that, that's the biggest issue for me because I don't want, you know, infrastructure and new construction to displace anybody. And so if they're, you know, we're getting two different views here. And so for me, if I could get it directly from the MPO that we're not going to be displacing people in order for this to happen, in order for this bridge to happen, then that would satisfy what I, I would want to see.
Okay, so can we, do you want to pull the entire item until we give this information? I would definitely ask the Homeowners Association to have a meeting to also see what the residents in that community and how they feel about that project coming to their community. Because I think that they should have a voice in the matter as well, as well as having the facts on, you know, the bridge and what it would mean for the First Street Bridge if they built another bridge and how they would engineer that bridge. Because I've heard several different things about that. So it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Like, why do we need another bridge? It's just one street over. I, I don't know any place that has a, two bridges, one street over. We are Dana Beach. We are not the City of Miami Beach to where we have a million people, you know, in high-dense areas that are looking to cross a bridge. And so I, I, what I will do is I'm going to ask the Homeowners Association in that area to have a meeting and that we all can attend and not speak and just listen. And then maybe Commissioner Luella can have a representative or someone like that from the MPO come out and give that presentation and everyone can see for themselves the feelings on that. Are you all right with that, Commissioner Davis?
That works for me. You can.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Luella?
I actually have another suggestion as well. We could actually approve it with the condition that nobody gets displaced. So that this way, if there is a problem, then this way we can move on.
No, I already have a suggestion. Can we please go on with that suggestion? Because you're trying to force something in a community that you're not.
Uh, no.
You're not listening.
I am listening, I'm listening.
You're reporting of order. Thank you. We're gonna move on, um, with that suggestion. Commissioner Davis said that was okay. Um, Commissioner Ottman, is that okay with you? Yes, um, Vice Mayor, is that okay with you?
No.
No, great, we're moving on, we'll have that. Um, so then do we have a motion and a second? Uh, well, I'll make the motion, uh, for seven point four to approve the support of the commitment twenty forty-five Metropolitan Transportation Plan, excluding, um, for now, the bridge over the C ten canal until we have further information. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, call the roll please, Tom?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
No.
Or Oddman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salvino?
No.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion carried, three to one.
Thank you. Um, and the other one was seven point ten?
Yeah, seven point ten. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Danny's Florida amending chapter six entitled, beaches, parks, waterways and recreation, article one entitled in general, to create section six dash twenty-five entitled designated child play areas pertaining to the safety and welfare of children playing in the city parks. Planning for conflicts, planning for severability, further providing for an effective date, first reading from Parks and Recreation.
Yes, I just wanted to pu- pull this item. I ha- I have no issues with this item. I actually wanted to thank staff and thank Eric Brown and, and the city manager and everyone who's involved in, um, this ordinance. Uh, just to say it before the public, this ordinance basically adds language to protect our children, um, at our parks. We have a lot of loitering going on. We have a lot of, of adults that are hanging out in our play areas. And there are a lot of, um, parents who are intimidated, uh, to bring their children to the park because there has been a lot of illegal activity going on. And, uh, Captain Marks have been instrumental in his team in, um, public services to making sure that those parks stay clean and safe. And so this language will add that, um, Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, that ages twelve and under are the only ones that are allowed. Um, and that if an adult is present, they have to be accompanied by a child. Meaning that you have to bring a child, you have to have a child with you in order to be in the vicinity of, um, those parks. Um, Eric?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor Vice Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Attorney, Eric Brown, Parks Director. Yes, that is correct. Um, this ordinance will allow us to put up signs that state that, uh, all adults must be accompanied by a child. Um, and what that does is allow us to take our playgrounds back. Because as we know, we'll be working closely with Danny, with, uh, BSO, with Danny and staff. And no, once those signs go up at our playgrounds, whenever a cop come through or a staff person come through and don't see a child with an adult there at the playground itself, we can ask them to leave. So allow us, so right now we're taking back our playgrounds. Because we have a lot of our playgrounds with a lot of adult activity going on with no kids involved. Some parents are threatened by bringing their kids out because of the activity that's happening at our playgrounds.
Absolutely. And we have a lot of unattended, unattended children and minors that, um, we have to really make sure that we are paying attention to. We have a few sexual predators in our area, as, as any area does. And so during our part, to make sure that we are ensuring the safety of all of our children is definitely paramount. Um, go ahead, City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we've had this conversation before in regards to the safety in the parks. And, and, and I just wanted to thank Eric and, and Cassie and Raphael and Anthony and, and the Safety Committee. Because we are really, um, ensuring that we're taking proactive measures. And also going back to what Captain Marks discussed, we want to see in, 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 in this budget, and I've been discussing the BSO budget with Frank today, that we can move, um, based on the monies that we have today to be able to purchase a couple more of, um, of, of those cameras to alleviate us and, and to mitigate those concerns. So I just wanted to thank the team, thank all of you as well.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second, seven point ten?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'd have requests for proposals, public hearing, nine point one.
Nine point one is a very lengthy title, so just bear with me. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Danny's Florida relating to the Land Development Code, the LDC, amending certain provisions of the LDC to further refine provisions relating to chapter twenty-eight entitled Land Development Code by amending article two oh five entitled Tabular Summary of Site Development Standards for All Zoning Districts at section two oh five dash ten entitled Schedule Lot, Yard and Bulk Regulations to amend the calculation of townhouse previous area, amending article two six five entitled Off-Street Parking Requirements at section two six five dash fifty entitled Off-Street Parking Required On-Street Parking Credit to clarify daycare parking minimum requirements, clarify daycare parking minimum requirements. Why it says it twice there? Amending subpart one, Community Development Rede- Redevelopment Area CRA Form-Based Zoning Districts at Article three oh two entitled Detailed Use Regulations.
Yes.
In section three oh two dash ten, permitted special exception and prohibited uses to clarify some of the uses, amending article three oh three entitled District Development Standards at section three oh three dash eighty entitled S F E D dash M U South Federal Highway Corridor Mixed Use Figure three oh three dash twenty-three entitled S F E D Avenue District MA, amending part, part five entitled signage and design standards, article five oh five entitled sign regulations at section five oh five dash one sixty entitled temporary signs to limit banner size. Amending part six entitled Development Review Procedures and Requirements at section six thirty-five dash twenty entitled applicability to allow small scale amendments for duplexes, amending sections six thirty-five dash one hundred entitled expiration of site plans procedure for extension to clarify that a building permit must be received. Amending article six seven five entitled temporary use and special event permits at section six seventy-five dash forty entitled Standards and Procedures for Approval of Temporary Use to clarify temporary uses and amending section six seventy-five dash twenty entitled temporary uses. Authorized to clarify the uses, running for conflicts, providing for severability, further providing for an effective second reading of that ordinance by Community Development.
Hi, Corinne. How are you? This is, um, Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director, Community Development. This is second reading of this ordinance. It was first reading, um, way back in June. So, um, I can refresh your memories on what some of these items are. But I would first like to address, um, one of the items that I know has gotten a lot of interest, um, today mostly, um, regarding South Federal Highway Mixed Use. What this is, this is not a change of zoning. The zoning districts and the zoning map exist. What I understand is that there are residents that are concerned that we are expanding the South Federal Highway Mixed Use zoning district into a neighborhood. We are not. Um, that change happened in two thousand eleven in Janu- on January tenth of two thousand twelve. Um, it was initiated by the CRA, Jeremy Earl at the time. Um, so that expansion, however they feel about it, happened ten years ago. What I'm doing tonight with that particular section is the map exists. We changed it in two thousand twelve. In my zoning code, we have a reference to that, um, zoning district. That's wrong, it was never updated. So what I'm, the section that's referring to South Federal Highway in today's text amendment is just to update the picture of that zoning district to be correct and match my map. Because right now it, it doesn't match my map. So it's just correcting a graphic. I can go through the presentation if you like, but, um, I can, maybe it'll be easier if I touch on some of these things. Um, the first one, there's like six different amendments. The first is to clarify previous calculations for townhomes. The next was to clarify parking requirements for daycare uses. The third was to add bakeries and delicatessens and coffee shops to the list of permitted outdoor dining uses. The fourth was regards to that, um, South Federal Highway Mixed Use graphic that was being at corrected. The fifth was to allow the square footage, um, to, we were amending the square footage for temporary signs. And the fourth was to, um, expand exemptions on the temporary uses. I could have a full presentation if you'd like to see that as well.
Um, I'm not sure, does anyone need the presentation? No, I, I, I'll let the, the residents. I know that I have a few, um, a few requests to address the commission. So I'll, I'll let them speak and then see if we have any questions after that. Terrell and Janet? You know, I saw Janet on here before.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Janet McCombs. I live at forty-one Southwest Fifth Street. And thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. Our neighborhood would like to address ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero one one eight, section three oh three dash eighty, second reading, the South Florida Highway Corridor Mixed Use District Rezoning. We ask that this item be tabled for further discussion with the neighborhood. This is not a good idea for any residential area. At a planning and zoning meeting on July nineteenth, twenty seventeen, reference R Z dash forty-four seventeen, I addressed this issue regarding a property at thirty Southwest Fifth Street and presented nineteen signed letters from our neighbors, mostly on Southwest Fifth Street, against this rezoning change on our street. My husband, Terrell's parents bought our house on Southwest Fifth Street in nineteen fifty-seven and he has lived here all his life. The oldest home in our area was built in nineteen twenty-four. We are hoping that the zoning line would go back to where it was before twenty-ten. We are dealing with Airbnbs at Daniel Point, provides many things for us to enjoy. It isn't a perfect location. Uh, Airbnbs are, are popping up everywhere. And we like to keep our residential streets as they should be, residential. No businesses need to be on our streets, even where the zoning lines exist now. I know they were approved, I understand that in two thousand twelve. But, um, it's just the way development is going today. What's to stop things from moving forward up the street? It doesn't belong on a residential street. We needed to keep it on federal highway. Appreciate the time to talk, thank you.
Thank you, Janet. I think what, what you're asking to happen would have to go through a different and a separate process. And that's not something that, you know, we could vote on tonight. Um, we're just voting to approve a, a photo or an image that, a map that will go with the already approved, um, area and zone. So if you are wishing to re, um, district or rezone your area, that is also something that you can go with, um, with Corinne and Eleanor and our community development and see how to go about doing that. That's what I would recommend to you.
So what are you saying? That blue lines that were bubbled in, that's not the extending of the zone? It's, it's, the zone is the red line, red lines, the existing lines.
Right.
Okay. All right, so I guess we, I'm just, um, I don't understand this whole process. But if you can commit to that, is nothing's changing? Because I have found out this evening something else was going on. Um, and I'm not happy about, um, the, the zoning process. Uh, it's a different meeting, I won't discuss it tonight. But, um, I will try to look forward to meeting with you and, and your committee and, and trying to get this fixed. Because it's just, where does it end? It just doesn't stop.
I understand. And I can commit that tonight, what we are voting on with this item is only to allow the map to match the already approved. This is not a new approval for a new area to be resolved differently.
Okay, thank you.
Christie?
Hi, yes?
Hi, can you please say your address for the record?
Christie Laurie, I live at twenty Southwest Fifth Street, Daniel Beach, Florida. Um, I more or less am neighbors with Ms. McCo- uh, Terrell and McCombs's, uh, wife. And what she is speaking of is we have had neighbor, uh, our neighbor at thirty knock on our door and ask us if we are willing to sell because he is speaking and doing of a detailed business with cars. He has four apartments in one house, as far as across the street does as well. Well, that is not permitted properly. So we're just trying to figure out a way to move forward to stop it from happening because we don't want it being a commercial property.
Okay, um, Corinne and Eleanor are both on and they are taking notes of, um, the property that you speak of. Thank you. Sean? Is Sean? Is there Sean Kalinius on?
No, my husband was not able to make it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
He, uh, he owns two fifty down the street.
And?
And we've been, we've ju- we've just been having a lot of issues with the Popeyes garbage. We've been having a lot of issues with everything on the street with the Airbnbs like Terrence and his wife mentioned. And that's why we're looking more into trying not to get any more approval for commercial on the street.
I understand. I understand. And what about Mary, is Mary here?
Yes, she is, that's my mother. She, you should be able to find her on there.
Okay.
You have to unmute. Yeah, hello?
I, I, hi, Ms. Mary, could you please say your name and address for the record?
Uh, yes, Mary Laurie, eighteen Southwest Fifth Street, Dana.
Yes.
And, um, we've had a problem with thirty before. Um, I really don't want residential next to mine. He's got a detailed business that he has cars in there constantly, um, in and out. Um, at least the, the whole front of his apartment is, um, a driveway. And he had like maybe twelve, fifteen cars in there the other night, um, covered up after he got through detailing him. Um, it's just, this stuff belongs on federal highway. It does not belong next to a residential house. And it needs to be kept on federal highway. And I have people knocking on my door wanting to know if I want to sell my house. Or both of them. And I tell them, no, they're not for sale. And that's annoying.
Okay. Oh, thank, thank you, thank you, Mary. Only thing I can do is tell you to, um, not sell your house if you don't want to sell your house. And, um, to, if any, whatever, whatever issues that you have to, um, you can email me or the city manager or anyone on our staff and we'll be sure, make sure that we, you know.
Right. Yeah, I live down the block from Terrell also. But my mother and I have owned that house since sixty-nine, we've lived there. So we're longtime residents also.
Okay.
But, you know, bringing a, a car detailed business, it's not noisy, but it's annoying with the cars running in and out.
All right, I understand. We'll have staff.
And it, yeah, that, that stuff belongs on federal highway, not on Fifth Street.
Got it. All right, we'll have staff look into that, all right?
Okay, thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome, have a good evening.
You too.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this item? Do we have a motion in a second?
Make a motion, Mayor.
To approve?
Approve, yes.
Second.
Um, call the roll please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Oddman? Pardon me?
Yes, you say yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Nine to? Nine to? Tom, Andrew?
Nine to is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Danny's Florida, amending chapter twenty-eight entitled Land Development Code Part Eight entitled Technical Appendix at Article Eight entitled Public Art Program to amend section eight eleven dash sixty entitled applicability by amending the list of entities that can request an exemption from payment of the public art fee or exemption from compliance with the ordinance. Writing for conflicts, writing for severability, for the providing for an effective date, second reading, uh, which has been prepared by our office. This, you will recall, is to amend the public art program so that the only people or entities that can seek an exemption from participating in the public art program would be a project that consists of the reconstruction or replacement of buildings or structures which have been damaged by fire, flood, wind, or other natural disaster. So, so schools, churches, or places of worship, affordable housing and projects receiving economic development grants would no longer have the ability to apply for exemptions as has been done in the past recent. That's the intent.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this? A motion in a second?
Make a motion to pass, Mayor.
Second. Call the roll, please. Favorite. That's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want to post? Eight, nine, three?
An ordinance of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, amending chapter six, entitled Beaches, Parks, Waterways and Recreation of the City's Code of Ordinances to update city park and beach rules and regulations. To clarify the definition of parks include parking areas and lots. To clarify provisions relating to animals, including dogs. To ban balloons, to require special event permits for certain large gatherings. To ban loud amplified music, to protect sand dunes. To prohibit the use of drones, to prohibit the vending of any items in parks without a city permit. To prevent launching and landing of vessels from and upon the beach. To clarify restrictions relating to tents, cannibies, and umbrellas. To provide for regulations pertaining to kayaks and paddle boards. Writing for conflicts, writing for severability, further providing for an effective date. Second reading of this ordinance, also sponsored by my office. This was based on requests and suggestions from the lifeguards, from BSO, from Parks and Recreation and administration to help fix the beach with issues that continue to plague us with, uh, difficulties that just don't fit on the beach anymore.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this?
Make a motion to pass it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Nine, four?
Is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, relating to chapter seventeen of the City Code of Ordinances, entitled offenses miscellaneous, Article Eight, entitled sexual offenders, at section seventeen dash one two eight, entitled sexual offender residency provision. To amend and clarify specifically that bus stops and certain childcare facilities are included in the city's determination of areas where children regularly congregate and define park and playground, writing for conflicts, writing for severability, for the providing for an effective date. Second reading, also from my office. Again, just to clarify, as other cities surrounding us do, that sexual offenders may not, uh, live even in a hotel or rentals or homes in any place that was within twenty-five hundred feet of a bus stop or these different parks and playgrounds.
I have a question. How are the hotel owners going to know whether or not they're sexual offenders or not?
Sexual offenders have to disclose that they're sexual offenders and when they register under state law.
Okay. Do they, do, do they, um, run it under a certain database when they, um, try to check into a hotel or something or?
I can't answer that, but I know the police department knows the answer. But I do know that they are required to disclose it when they sign in to register into a hotel.
Oh, okay. Um, anyone from the public to speak for or against this?
Make a motion, Mayor. Pass it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nine and five, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, amending chapter eight of the City Court of Ordinances, entitled Buildings, Section eight dash twenty-five, Regulations relating to Broward County Forty-Year Building and Structure Recertification Program, writing for conflicts, writing for severability, further providing for an effective date, second reading by Community Development.
Um, this is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Nine, six?
Items nine, six, and nine, seven are related, so I'll read them together. They are what are called these quasi judicial type of hearings so that anybody who speaks, uh, other than attorneys are testifying, they'll have to be taken for and under oath. And under Jennings, if you've been contacted, writing anybody either for or against, uh, the application, you would disclose that. Item six is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, approving the site plan SB oh eight, oh one eight, just twenty-one, the allocation of forty-six flexibility units, OT oh two oh, that's twenty-one, and a waiver of the dumpster enclosure requirements, OT oh twenty-nine, twenty-one, submitted by Lay Robinson Current Associates, Inc., on behalf of Eastside Five LLC, with a property generally located south of northeast Second Street and west of northeast Sixth Court in the City of Dana Beach, Florida, as legally described in Exhibit A, a copy which is attached to this resolution. Writing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, continued from the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one commission meeting, sponsored by Community Development and nine, seven. The companion is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, Florida, approving the Atlantica at Dana Beach Plats, PL oh one nine, twenty-one, submitted by Lay Robinson Current Associates, Inc., on behalf of Eastside Five LLC, with a property generally located south of northeast Two Street and west of northeast Sixth Court, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, writing for conflicts, further providing for an effective date, also continued from the July thirteenth meeting.
Thank you. Corinne? Corinne?
I'm sorry. Good evening. Um, this item was continued, um, from the previous meeting to allow the applicant to have their traffic engineers look at the intersection of Second and Federal Highway because that was a concern at the last meeting among the, um, residents that spoke. The applicant has done that. And I know that they are online with a pretty large team, um, prepared to speak and answer questions that you may have. They have done that. They've looked at that intersection. I can let them share with you what those findings are. But we have worked with the applicant, their engineers, along with our city, um, engineers from Public Works. And they have agreed to look at, um, some alternative designs that may be possible on, um, northeast Second Avenue as a way to, um, potentially mitigate the impacts on that roadway. So they were going to look at, um, some of those options and, um, prepared designs um, so that later the city can maybe implement some of those, um, mitigations on that roadway. So they've agreed to participate in, with the city in figuring out some improvements on that roadway. And that's actually a condition that we've added to the resolution that they've agreed to do prior to the issuance of permits. I can go through the presentation again if you like, but I think you may be more interested in hearing, um, from the applicant about their findings with that amended traffic study.
Yes, I see Dennis Mealy is right here. We'd love to hear from him.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Dennis Mealy, two hundred East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, on behalf of the applicant. Um, we have a couple of slides to show. Um, I don't know if, um, there's a way for, uh, us to be able to share the screen or whatever. But Kelly Ray, who's on with me, has those slides, if there's a way for us to show those.
She's been promoted to panelist and then she can go ahead and share her screen at that point.
All right, Kelly, um, do you have that? In the meantime, while we're pulling that up, um, so at, at the July thirteenth meeting, we talked about a bunch of the different intersections in the area. Uh, we were asked about the intersection of northeast Second Street and Federal Highway, uh, because a number of people in the community had referenced that it's a busy intersection and then there's some problems there. So, um, we'll show you in a minute what we did. Kelly, would you go to slide number nine, please? Cause everything else is stuff we showed last time. I just want to show the new, the new materials. That's the one that shows all of the, uh, intersections going into the neighborhood. I think it's page nine. All right, let's keep going. We'll get to nine. Kelly, can we keep going? All right. Well, while we're doing that, um, the first thing we did is we looked at all of the different intersections that would take you, uh, into and out of this neighborhood. Uh, all along Federal Highway, Third Street, Second Street, First Street, Dana Beach Boulevard. And then also along Dana Beach Boulevard, uh, as you're east of Federal Highway. All right, we're getting to it now. There we go. So we did, we produced this graphic just to show all the different routes that one could take coming in and out of the neighborhood. Uh, the only intersection where we found a congested condition was the corner of Second Street and Federal Highway. Now, two of the movements are congested. If you were heading westbound on Second, then you want to go northbound on Federal, right? So you want to make that right turn. Uh, that movement is congested. The other one that's congested is if you're going south on Federal and you want to go east on Second, right? So you want to go south on Federal, make that like a left turn on Second. So, um, we saw, but we also saw, uh, some problems there. When you are heading westbound on Second Street towards Federal Highway, when you get to the corner, you see a sign that says right turn only. In other words, you're not supposed to turn left and you're not supposed to go straight. Now, the going straight part, the Second Street only exists for one block, uh, west of Federal because it doesn't cross the railroad tracks. Um, and so a lot of people, I mean, if you're going straight, you're only going straight for a very short distance. What I think happens, and what a number of the neighbors in the community told me they believe happens, is people are heading west on Second. They pass Fronton Boulevard, they pass Second Court, they pass Second Avenue, they pass First Court, they pass First Avenue. Now here they are at Federal and all of a sudden they find out you can't go straight or turn left. Now, if you live in the neighborhood, you already know that. But if you don't live in the neighborhood and you're not familiar with it, it's a problem. So we've recommended, uh, Kelly, if you want to go to the next slide, please. Uh, we've recommended what's called wayfinding signage that was recommended by our, uh, traffic engineer. And by the way, also recommended by your traffic engineer and your city engineer. That what we want to do is put in signage so as you're going west on Second, before you get to the point where you can't make a decision because you have no place else to go, to tell you, and you see in the upper left-hand corner, to US one southbound use Fronton Boulevard. So in other words, it's encouraging you to make that left turn so that if you want to go south on Federal, you can go off to First Street, which has a traffic light and turn left there. Or you could go to Dana Beach Boulevard that has a traffic light and turn left there. Because as you know, on Federal Highway, if you're trying to make a left turn at a busy time and you don't have a traffic light, you're going to be waiting a long time. And so what we heard from neighbors is that it's that one person who's trying to go straight or turn left from Second Street onto Federal that's backing up everybody else. So we think that this signage will be helpful, letting people know which way to go so that you're not trying to turn left from Second Street onto Federal. Uh, now, uh, we're showing, you know, this red line is the area in which the signage could be placed. But you could also even, uh, west of Fronton, be encouraging people to make that left and go down to First Street or down to Dana Beach Boulevard if they're going to go southbound on US one. The reason we kind of focused on Fronton is because it's a larger road. It's got a traffic signal at the corner of Dana Beach Boulevard and Fronton. But that's not the only place someone can turn left and get on the correct street, which is either First Street or Dana Beach Boulevard if you only go south on Federal. Now, the staff has also recommended, uh, keep in mind that this is a traffic issue that already exists. Whether we build this project or not, that corner is congested for those two movements. So, uh, the city's engineers and the city staff has recommended that we do further study and prepare a conceptual design plan for improvements to Second Street that can be vetted by the community, by the city. And then if everyone agrees that those are the right improvements, be presented to the county or the DOT as applicable to make sure that they can be put in. Now, uh, just to give you a, a flavor for the numbers, you know, we look at these turning movements, this right, this westbound Second to northbound Federal. We look at that in the morning rush hour and the afternoon rush hour. We also look at the southbound Federal to eastbound Second, uh, in that morning rush hour and afternoon rush hour. So just to give you a feel for the, for the numbers, um, in the morning rush hour, if you want to go westbound on Second and turn north on Federal, right? Want to go up towards the airport. Uh, that road is supposed to be able to carry about a hundred and forty trips during that hour. We have eleven. Uh, in the afternoon, that same movement would carry eighty trips or eighty right turns. We have seven. So our numbers are very small as compared to the, uh, capacity of the road. But I think there's recognition that you have other projects that may be coming online in the future that are going to generate a lot more traffic than we will. Um, but the time to do the planning and the design to be ready for that is now. So we've been asked to contribute that work. Um, we are fortunate that our traffic engineer, Kimberly Horn, is probably the best known in South Florida. They've been doing this for a very, very long time and they've done a lot of work in this area. Uh, they not only do work for private parties like us, but they also do work for local governments, just like Calvin Giordano does for you. Um, so we, what we're committed to with these two new conditions of approval is first, the wayfinding signage I showed. And secondly, uh, prior to the building permit, uh, we have to provide, um, some improvement alternatives for Second Street, uh, east of Federal. Before we even get a building permit, we have to provide that information. So certainly that information will be in your hands for several months before the first person moves into our project. So that's what we've been asked to do. That's the analysis we did. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And if there's any public comment, like the opportunity to respond is appropriate. Thank you very much. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Yes, I was trying to figure out how to, okay, I needed to stop sharing so I could see, um, our panelists. Um, is there anyone from the public to speak for or against this item? Please raise, use your raise your hand tool. And then, um, from the commission, are there any comments?
Ask if there's no citizens coming here.
Okay, I think Commissioner Davis, does she have something to say? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Um, I, I do want to thank you for doing your additional, uh, due diligence with this traffic study. I did believe that those two intersections would fail because I witnessed the amount of traffic that goes, uh, between Second Street and Federal Highway and then also from Federal Highway back down to Second Street. And my, my purpose in bringing that to the attention was so that we could find some sort of resolution, something that would work, um, you know, to be proactive and help to mitigate the traffic before we have the residents coming. And so I do believe that the wayfinding signage, uh, will be helpful in addition to making designs. Um, will, will definitely, uh, help to do that. And that, that was my purpose and my goal in making sure because we do know that something is going to go there. I do believe that this project overall is a good project. And, um, and it's a great size for that area. It fits in that neighborhood. But I wanted something to be done specifically regarding the traffic on that area. And you have specifically addressed that. So I thank you for bringing it back and, and doing it thoroughly. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, call roll, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodman?
You're a little muffled, um, Lauren.
Yes. Vice Mayor Salvino?
Yes, yes.
Mayor James?
Yes.
Motion carried five, zero.
And for nine, seven, the plat.
Again, uh, Corinne, do you want to, um, speak? I was just going to ask for a motion in a second.
Make a motion, Mayor.
Hold on, hold on. I can't. You don't have anything to say?
No, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone to speak for or against this? We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to post? Great. Um, discussion of possible action from Corinne, the regional activity center allocated units.
Good evening. Um, I'm just going to, um, all right, make a quick little presentation. It's not intended to be very long. Um, but I did kind of want to update you and let you know where we stand. Hopefully you all can see my screen. Um, let me go to slideshow. Okay. Um, so a quick presentation on the- Okay. Um, so a quick presentation on the Regional Activity Center. As you all know, that we have a finite pot of dwelling units that are assigned to the Regional Activity Center, which is associated with a geographical area within the city. So I'm just going to go through a brief little history real quickly. Some, um, previous redevelopment initiatives that at least I'm aware of through my lifetime at the city. I remember that we had started with the Florida Main Street Program. That was one of the initial redevelopment incentives. It focused on the historic downtown that we had. It, um, was isolated mostly along, um, Federal Highway. Sorry, I do have a slide on that. Um, and that was our first little effort to try to spur economic development in our downtown. Um, that was, um, in nineteen ninety-eight. So when I came on board in tw- two thousand and two, it was, um, kind of the ending days of that program. Then we can, um, changed over to the Local Activity Center. This was our first land use designation associated with our redevelopment efforts. And, um, as you can see in the ma- in the graphic, it's this dark kind of purple area. So Dana City Hall is right about here. So it, it stretched, um, from, it looked like First down to Sterling Road on Federal Highway and then down east on Dana, on Dana Beach Boulevard. So that was the location of the Local Activity Center. It focused on a quarter mile or five-minute walk and also a quarter mile of mass transit. So it was a smaller concentrated area, but it focused on redevelopment. And in that geographical area, we did assign units. So this was our first, um, allocation of dwelling units for geographical area. These units, um, were, I remember that we did an analysis on how many single-family homes we had in the area, how many hotel rooms we had in an area. And then this Local Activity Center was, um, to set additional units for redevelopment. I know that there are different factors that go into how many units that we would be assigned from the county, such as trips on our roads, our road capacity. School capacity at the time was a very big issue, as well as fire capacity and water capacity, our potable water. So this was the Local Activity Center. And then later in, um, twenty-ten is when we established the Regional Activity Center. This is a larger area. This is what we have today. This stretch includes Dana Point and it goes from I ninety-five east along East, along East Dana Beach Boulevard. And it's the entire stretch of Federal Highway from almost Old Griffin all the way down to Sheridan Street. So this is a much larger area, um, and, but it also has units associated with it. There are more units associated with this. It's a larger area. Um, this was also established in twenty-ten, just for reference purposes. So originally we started with the Local Activity Center, two thousand five hundred sixty-five units. The Regional Activity Center in twenty-ten came onboard with seven thousand eight hundred eighteen units. What we have today through, we've assigned these units as development projects come onboard, as our site plans come forward, we assign them units out of this pot. What we have today remaining is one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight units. So that's, um, something that we wanted to bring to your attention. I know that in the past twenty-four months, when we look at the site plans that come through our door, we have seen more development and larger development. Um, I think this can be credited to Dana Point and we're certainly a place of interest now. But the projects that we've been getting are larger. So, though that pot is finite and we've been pulling, drawing down on it much quicker recently. And these are some of the developments that we, we've seen and you can see what those numbers are. They're, they're pretty large. Um, in addition, where we stand today, um, Dana Point is also coming on, um, and will be coming up shortly in September, asking for another four hundred dwelling units. That is to get to their number of units that are identified on the plat. They've always anticipated using those units. And so now they're coming in to lock up those units for themselves, for the, for the development and build out of their site. At this point, this is something that, um, we would like to have a further discussion about. We're asking it that the commission agreed to schedule a workshop so we can discuss this issue. We can discuss whether we want to replenish the pot and ask the county for additional units. Is it, um, maybe we want to be more thoughtful about it, be more specific about where those locations, you know, where those units are delegated or distributed at in the future. But we, we do think it's important enough that we, um, would like a workshop to discuss this further. And we would have a consultant come and, um, who's, um, more familiar with the county interactions to hopefully answer some of our more detailed questions as we have that conversation.
Um, Corinne, I have a question. Not others. Are you, can you go, okay?
I'm sorry, I can go back.
To the slide that says how many units we have left, or you can just tell me, it's fine. Was it like eighteen hundred units left or something like that?
Yes, we have eighteen, I'm sorry. Yes, eighteen hundred.
Does that mean that, um, that area would be built out in, in that you're asking maybe to request that we add more density?
Well, that's what the, um, we would like to discuss during the workshop. I, we don't have to go back and ask for more units to replenish the pot, but we can. So that's an option that we can go forward, but in doing so, we do have to look at capacity. Um, I think the most pressing issue at this point is our water, potable water supply. And so that's something that we have to factor in and make sure we're able to, you know, meet those supply requirements that would come onboard with the additional units.
So the, this number isn't a capacity number? Because that's kind of how I understood it when you were saying that this was the capacity that they gave us. And then, um, after eighteen hundred more units that we would be at capacity and then we would just ask to add more on top of that.
Right. Well, we, when the Regional Activity Center was established and the county allocated those units to us, we were able to identify how we were able to support those units. So technically we have capacity for the amount of units we have assigned. It's when we ask for additional units for the replenishment that we would also have to identify how we're able to sustain those additional units.
Okay, Vice Mayor. You're muted.
Sorry. Um, I think, uh, I don't know if a workshop is a, is a, is an order as of now, but I think table in this is, is an order. I think, uh, for a little bit further discussion, I think that, uh, I'd like to see before we, I guess we could do it in a workshop, but maybe with presenting us with, um, what's the eighteen or units, where they would go as we have it and why we'd have to create more. I mean, if a workshop is deemed for that, that's fine, but, um, you know, we don't want, I think, I think when we start talking about get the capacity, uh, you know, this may be part of a plan to slow down a little bit. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I need to clarify. We are at one thousand two hundred.
Right now, how many other projects, I mean, how many more projects could we possibly put up that would use twelve hundred more, you know, dwelling units?
It depends on the size of each of the projects. The projects, like the wave came in, each building was three hundred and eighty units.
Right, but they're, everything's caught up to date, though. We still have many left over, right?
Right. Uh, you know, another point of frustration is once they're assigned, they're locked up and we don't get them back. So that's another point of frustration, especially with the governor issues these executive orders. And they, while our site plans expire, the executive orders keep these projects alive much longer than we would allow. So we, we lose them when they're assigned.
I would go on your recommendation, Corinne. I mean, you guys have done a good job. So whatever you guys think we should do, I would.
May, Mayor, if I could jump in, please?
Yeah, I was gonna get to you. Go ahead.
Uh, I just want to add that the reason that we're, we're bringing this forward and requesting a workshop is as Corinne mentioned, there's currently twelve hundred, but there's already a pipeline of developers waiting and not waiting, submitting applications. So really the, the twelve hundred is, is going to be eight hundred very, very soon. And then there's over eight hundred, uh, units total of people submitting applications. And we want to request a workshop so we could know which way to go. Because developers are going to be submitting and we don't have enough, uh, units to be able to provide them, uh, for their developments. So that, that was the reason we wanted to schedule a workshop, uh, to lay it all out on the table and get direction.
Corinne, question, um, this isn't for the, this is just for this, for a specific area that's in the city, correct?
That's correct. It's the majority, it's located east of I ninety-five. It's the majority of that area, east of ninety-five.
That stretch to maybe an area that has not been in the Regional Activity Center that maybe you could get units there because it's just hard for me to believe all of these units that we've given. And we have twelve hundred left. I mean, um, and then to ask for more units, that, that sounds a little bit like um, overkill and a problem, especially when we're looking at, you know, um, our lift stations and we're looking at our water supplies and we're always already, you know, having challenges and adversity when it comes down to that. Um, is there any way that that area could be extended to a different part of the city?
The, um, I don't know that expansion of the RAC would be helpful. Um, but I do know that we are also getting interest out west as well, like you, um, the city commission approved Griffin Living on Griffin Road. That's residential. Harbor Landings is out there by four forty-one. We have another project coming in off of Sterling Road. Um, so we do have an interest out west. It just seems there's been more interest to the east and they seem to be larger, more intense projects with more units. So they go faster.
Yeah, location is there. That's why. I mean, of course, everyone wants to be closer to the beach.
And Mayor, the, 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 the reason that there is the cap on the east side is to li- was to limit it. Uh, there is no cap on the west side of ninety-five. So, so they could build currently and continue to expand on the west side without a cap.
All right. I'm Vice Mayor.
I go ahead. I suggest you go ahead and takes, uh, you know, the city's, um, advice and put a workshop together.
Well, absolutely, because we have a bunch of questions. All right. Um, everybody have their, uh, calendars out?
Tomorrow, twelve o'clock, they could buy us lunch. Oh, my God.
Marco said bring them food. Corinne, what, what days are you, are, are best or are you looking at?
We're really looking at whatever works for you, your, the commission. We know you have multiple schedules to coordinate. So whatever works for you will be available.
Um, how about second week in, uh, September? How does that look for everyone? The Monday is Labor Day. Obviously we wouldn't have it then, but that, uh,
Tuesday.
Time is on Tuesday.
Joyce, we can't hear you. I'm, I'm mute.
Okay. Did you hear me about Tuesday?
Didn't know Tuesday. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Wednesday and Thursday I can. I'm available Wednesday and Thursday.
Anyone?
Wednesday and Thursday work for me.
Okay.
Better.
Wednesday's better for me, but preferably late in the day.
I can't do it today, that's all.
Can't do it.
Wed- Wednesday I'm good, except from eleven to twelve. Rest of the day I'm good.
Okay, so, um, Wednesday, the eighth. Um, time, how long do you, um, anticipate this workshop, Corinne?
Um, one to two hours.
Okay, so two hours. Um, you guys want to do four to six or five to seven?
Just in person or virtual?
Virtually will be easier.
Then either one, either one's fine for me, as long as it's virtual.
Four, four, four o'clock. It, does that work for you, Commissioner Otman?
Um, I would have to be four thirty. That's when I get home with my, Milo.
So you want five? Is that, is it more comfortable?
Um, five, six, seven, yeah, five would be better.
Five to seven, okay with everyone? All right. Marco, you just have to Uber you some food. All right. Make sure this is on our, our calendars.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Davis?
All right, I'm gonna try to do this briefly. Um, all right. But, um, even though we were off for the summer, it did not feel that we were off for the summer. We got a lot of things going on all summer long. We kicked it off with going, uh, to all of our camps and partnering with the Trash Pirates to teach the kids in our community, um, all of our parks, including the Junior Lifeguards about ocean conservation and microplastics. And, um, we were just really happy with, with that project. We had a wonderful, we culminated all those education sessions with a big back-to-school beach cleanup on August the tenth. And I am here to thank each and every one of you from our, uh, administration and my colleagues who were able to make it. Um, again, manager Candido, Public Works, Linda Human Resources, uh, Fernando Cory Denser, the whole team, Community Development, Chris, everybody who came out to help us, uh, really made the event successful. And I, and we saw a lot of back-to-school events, but I think what made ours different is that the people actually, uh, came out together, were unified and the kids got a backpack as a result of, uh, cleaning the beach. And it was a community effort and they were able to be at community service hours. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you. Oh, Parks and Rec, I'm so sorry. Parks and Rec, you guys rocked and rolled. Thank you for getting all those backpacks together, stuffing them. I would be remiss. Eric, Cassie, uh, Anthony, thank you so much. Um, we also were able to attend the American Legion Officer Installations for both Post three oh four and two oh nine just last week. And, uh, it was the ninth district who did the installation. So we want to congratulate all those new officers or in returning officers. Uh, we also did the B, the BSO Youth Beach Cleanup on, on July seventeenth. And that was a wonderful, wonderful cleanup with all the kids. So, thank you BSO for coming out and helping to keep our beach pristine. Um, let's see. I also attended my very first Florida League of Cities Conference in Orlando. And it was an awesome experience. I do want to recognize and thank the mayor for making me a voting delegate. And it was a very, uh, wonderful experience as far as installing and voting for the new officers who are going to lead the Florida League of Cities. Um, again, the Dana MPRV had their o- opening night on August the nineteenth. And so that was just this past week and it was phenomenal. Uh, I think that's going to help to make our city a destination location. So, really, really, really great grand opening. The house was packed and I think we're really on the map. I actually argued with the people that we were in Dana Beach and not Fort Lauderdale. So we are good to go there. And last but not least, no, I think that was it. All right, so that's it for me. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for all your support. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, thank you. Um, I too went to the installation of officers at both of our American Legion posts, Post three oh four and Post two oh nine. Um, importantly, I, I think, uh, Commander John Moore at Post three oh four actually was given an award. He was awarded as the Legionnaire of the Year for the entire state. So he was recognized at a prior meeting, but was recognized yet again by District Nine at the, uh, installation, which was, um, a nice, nice opportunity for him and for the city. Um, Post two oh nine also received an award for attaining a hundred percent membership, um, which, which is a, a big deal. So a lot of posts have difficulty keeping their membership up and they did a nice job of that. And they were actually presented with the award at their, at the installation. The, I als- I also was at the Florida League of Cities Conference. And one of the, um, seminars that I went to that I, I wanted to share about um, had to do with future transportation. And one of the interesting things that they have going on there has to do with, um, flying cars uh, that basically are treated similarly to something like Brightline, um, except it's in the air. Um, more, more like a taxi service, not individual, uh, vehicles, but it's sort of like drones that, um, people could ride in, uh, different distances. Um, and it, they already have someplace set up in, I think it was Orlando. Um, but they are actually looking for a location in South Florida as well, so that they can have, uh, more of these going around. So it was a very interesting thing and, and something that's coming forward in the future. So it does look like the technology is there and it's moving ahead. So, um, just a very interesting, um, conference or interesting seminar, uh, probably the most interesting seminar that I went to. Um, and lastly, um, I also attended the beach cleanup with the bookbag giveaway, which was a fantastic event. The, um, kids were really excited about, uh, cleaning the beach and they were excited about helping with the environment. And knowing that they were also gonna get community service hours and knowing that they would also get a bookbag when they were finished and they really. Just, they were just so excited and really happy and learned a lot about the environment and learned about, um, taking care of their environment. Uh, so it was, it was a nice educational opportunity as well as, um, an opportunity to help out with bookbags for school, so with that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Otman?
Hey, okay, I'll be very quick. Um, I'm actually, I'm on the floor right now, my son is sick and I'm laying on the floor next to him because he's sick. So for those of you who have text messaged me as to why I keep going off screen, that's why. Um, but he's sleeping, so anyways. Um, so second, not related to, to, uh, his sickness, but. Uh, to the, to the testing that's going on at City Hall, I've had, um. I've had a couple of friends that I sent over there and a couple of, uh, of residents who went over there and I heard really, really great things. And, um, so I would definitely encourage those, uh, those of you who, if you ever hear anyone, you know, even having the idea and they're had to go. Send them to the City Hall site, they're doing the throat swab, um, which to a lot of people is a lot more tolerable. Um, and the results, uh, they all got back within about forty-eight hours. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I see, I see the city manager shaking her head, she, she knows how much I, uh, I like to eyeball this stuff. So, i- and some people still have a little bit of a bad, uh, memory in their head because. The earlier testing, if you remember, even the one at our City Hall, yep, 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 right, you had the nasal swab that went up into the sinus cavity. Um, at, at almost nowhere are they, are they doing that anymore, even at CVS. Um, but now is at the, 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 the lower part of your nares. But anyways, at City, if you know somebody who even is just at all adverse to anything going in the nose, and that, we do it at the throat. Um, just like you're getting a strep test, uh, i- in our City Hall, so very, very smooth. Um, and, and everyone has just really been, been thrilled that we are offering that. And I believe we are continuing to offer it until September ninth. Um, so, uh, you know, testing is, is very important as we continue to sort of, uh, venture out safely into the world. And lastly, my last little note that I have written down and, uh, Commissioner Llewellyn reminded me of it when talking about flying cars. Uh, the Bright Line, uh, if you've heard, is, is continuing to come along and. Uh, just this week, they reached sixty percent on their line from, uh, to Orlando. So I, I, that's very exciting that they've been able to continue to move along at a pretty good clip. So, and I, you may see the Bright Line train, you know, now it goes, uh, back and forth as they're getting their stuff together. So sixty percent, I was very excited about that. And, uh, that is all I have, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I did a little bit of what Commissioner Davis did, I did a little bit of what Commissioner Llewellyn did, I did a little bit of Commissioner. Uh, I didn't do Commissioner Otman's, because she did something different, I did a little bit of some of the stuff that they didn't do, so that's my comments for tonight, thank you.
Alright.
Well, I mean, I can't, I mean, everything that they've done, you know, we were all there together kinda like, so there's no need to repeat myself.
Commissioner Otman, I hope your son feels better. Um, as far as the COVID testing, I, I was wanting to get tested, especially after attending the Florida League of Cities. I, I went to City Hall and got tested, um, in and out in less than five or ten minutes. Uh, you have ample amount of staff, it flowed very smoothly, they did not jig that thing in my brain as they've done in the past. Um, I was a little apprehensive about it going into my throat, but it wasn't bad, it wasn't bad at all and I got my results and, uh, I have a negative test. So, um, I, I would encourage you all and I know that the city manager is probably gonna speak on. Um, the success of this testing site as well as the extension of the testing day, so, um, that'll be soon to come. I wanna remind everyone, uh, all the seniors, um, that there, it will be no senior meeting at IT Parker Center on September the second. Um, unfortunately, we've had to cancel our, some of our, um, events such as this due to the high numbers of COVID. Um, I had the amazing opportunity to go and speak to Florida Career College and, and their students, so I was really excited about that. Hollywood Hills, um, held a back-to-school, um, drive-through backpack giveaway, which I, I went out and helped out. With that, um, and, uh, Vice Mayor and I, he forgot to say this, we, we went to the meet and greet over at Collins Elementary with. Our school board rep, um, to meet and greet the parents, I was late, so I'm sure Vice Mayor did all the speaking and did a great job. Um, and then on the first day, I was able to, before I went and sent my own child, uh, went to Collins and Dania Elementary to meet and greet the parents as they. And the children as they dropped off their kids, um, to what is probably the most scariest school year yet. Um, you know, with everything that is going, so, uh, prayers or thoughts or whatever you, you think is appropriate, definitely. For our first responders, our teachers, our central workers and our, you know, children that, that are still dealing, um, with this. In the Florida League of Cities at that conference, I. I submitted, um, to become, uh, a member of the Florida League of Mayors. And there was a, uh, is an election like right there, like you can't, there's nothing campaigning, it's election and ballots passed out. And I was selected to be a representative for the Florida League of Mayors, so I, I look forward, we're working closely with them with any issues that we may have, I know I've. Contacted city manager while I was up there with a few issues that other cities were kinda going through and making sure that we get our money. Um, that was promised to us, I, I know that the governor had to, um, put together all the paperwork and they've sent it over to staff and Frank has assured me that he is on top of things, so I'm very happy. To report that, um, I've been in talks with Broward College about a possible apprenticeship, when I get more information. I'll be able to bring that and then, um, staff, uh, or I believe it was, um, deputy city, uh, uh, manager. Along with myself, uh, we went and, um, virtually met with the Broward Community, um, commuter rail briefing. That, uh, really will be advocating about different ways of connectivity. Because we aren't gonna have a station, I think there's gonna be a station in Hollywood and one at the airport, um, that's in Dania Beach. Um, and so, although we're, we're not gonna have a location right here in our city, like, uh. Outside of the airport, that they are going to seek funding or they would provide the funding. For different ways to connect our residents to be able to go from our residential areas to the commuter rail, so. It was a, it was a very interesting conversation and I look forward to the different ways that. Um, we would need to advocate and look at how we are budgeting, um, for our own transportation or things that is, will make sense. And to ensure that we are making those smart decisions when it comes down to transportation. That we are a more appealing city that will be awarded these scopes and types of projects. Um, there are certain criterias that we did not score high on. And, um, those are areas that I think that we definitely need to make sure that we are pay- paying attention, attention into the budget. And what we are advocating on, so we will become a more, um, more appealing city for these types of projects. And then I'm going to ask the city manager to touch on speed humps, I'm not sure if you all have been getting, um, notices or communications from residents who are. Just displeased or not really fully understanding the scope of our projects with our speed humps and our communications, um, with them in doing so, so in her manager's report, if she. Could please address this, and last but not least, I did, uh, attend also the, um, opening of the Improv. Uh, Marlon Wayans, uh, was, was a special guest and he was there the entire weekend, it was a different type of comedy. Um, it was funny and some of it was a little crazy, but, uh, over, overall, I really enjoyed my time, um, there and my evening there with a lot of my friends. And I hope that you all will patronize, um, this, uh, business because it's, it's one of the great businesses of entertainment that we're gonna have here in our city. And with that, that completes my comments. Appointment, I have one for the CACAB, it would be Tony Amos. I think you already have his information, Tom, is that correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor, who did you say?
Tony Amos. He's already on there, I think, as a, um, maybe ad hoc.
Okay, yes, absolutely, alright, perfect.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Uh, for Parks and Recreation, um, Carmen Feinberg, and I believe that Tom already has her information as well.
Yes.
Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Sorry, I have, um, for Parks and, uh, Parks and Recreation, for Planning and Zoning, I have Tommy Popletu. I butchered that last name, but, um, you should have his information, Tom, he submitted a, uh, an application.
Okay, yes, if he submitted a form, we'll have the information, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, it's Tony Walsh, not Amos, sorry, I got the Tonys mixed up.
Yes, Mayor, I recognize that name.
Thank you, do we have a motion in a second to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You wanna oppose? Admin report, city manager?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, city team and residents that are watching at home. Um, I wanna give you a couple of, um, key updates. Um, our, our COVID testing site, like a Commissioner Otman alluded to and you did as well, Mayor, has been working super smooth. Um, as of end of business day yesterday, on Monday the twenty-third, we had tested, um, close to thirteen hundred individuals. Um, based on that, uh, the, our deputy city manager and I had a meeting earlier today, he reached out. At Broward Health and, um, we're going to be extending the testing, um, by popular demand. And, and, and due to what's been happening with the variant and with COVID, um, to Thursday, uh, October the seventh. And then we'll reassess it, uh, again, I, I will tell you, I've been tested at, at this site. Yesterday at City Hall, got my results already, negative, thank God, I have tested in Dave, in Broward, walk-through, drive-through. This is the best testing site that I've been at, um, in, in all of South Florida. Um, so really, really excited and happy about that. Um, I also wanted to let you know, and thank you again for funding this professional, uh, position in, in procurement. Um, uh, the procurement, um, a manager sent an email, uh, to me today that the committee had recommended the top three. Um, proposals, uh, for the long-awaited, um, Dania Beach Grill, so I will be taking a look at that. Um, and, and recommending, um, to you at the next commission meeting. Um, so very, very excited about this long-awaited project and these three proposal look extremely amazing. And now I'll be able to take a closer look at those proposals mys- myself before recommending to you. Um, I also wanted to, to let you know that while our professional engineers and architects are assessing. Um, a JA Ely, um, Boulevard, that area also, we were able to get. Um, a BSO to move very, very, very quickly and actually already, um, do a lot of traffic calming. Um, so we were able to put a new sou- uh, southbound speed limit sign, um, on JA Ely Boulevard and Twelfth Avenue. Um, and North Twenty-second Avenue, um, a, a person, approximately ninety feet south of, uh, McLennan Street. A new northbound, um, thirty a mile per hour sign on JA Ely Boulevard and Twelfth Avenue, north of Twenty-second Avenue. Approximately thirty-five feet north of Atlanta Street. Um, a new northbound thirty mile an hour sign on the Boulevard and JA Ely, North Twenty-second Avenue, approximately thirty feet. North of, uh, Third Street, a new northbound pedestrian crossing warning sign on JA Ely Boulevard and Southwest Twelfth Avenue, North Twenty-second Avenue. Approximately hundred and thirty-five feet north of Atlanta Street. A new southbound pedestrian crossing warning sign on North Twenty-second Avenue, approximately a hundred and forty feet south of Douglas Street. In addition to what we're doing and as, and as soon as we get the report, I'll be reaching out to the city manager, um, of Hollywood. Um, as well, eh, to partake in, in that investment. Um, in regards to, to the speed humps, I wanted to let everybody know that. Um, based on our assessment and some complaints that we had received about, um, people bumping their heads. Um, what we visually saw, um, cars that came in because the signage was not aligned with, um. Where they needed to be to warn the people, eh, ninety percent of our speed humps were out of compliance. We're working to bring them into compliance, some of them were too close to the intersection. I will send to you again, eh, our director's report eh, tomorrow, um, to bring you up to speed. Um, we are taking into consideration other possible, um. Eh, eh, speed deterrents and traffic calming, if we were able to remove it or able to move it further back on the street. So I'll send you the full assessment and I'll have Fernando give a, a, a public presentation at, um, at the next commission meeting. Um, I also wanted to let you know, um, since we're being extremely consistent on, on our taxpayer dollars. Um, that we will be asking, um, all those that we fund for projects. Um, that to give us a, a, a detailed report, um, on their funding. If they're going to be drawing out from an, from an existing account that we would be setting up, and this is something that I will discuss with our finance director. Um, to give us eh, the account of those expenditures. Um, so, we're, we're gonna work together also to make sure that for the next meeting, we bring you a detailed report. On, um, on our recommendations for your consideration of funding, um, any of those non-for-profits. Um, that did fill out in, in, in application. Um, let's see, what else I have here, um, the, the parking garage in the FAU site. Eh, we're working very, very closely with our county commissioner, Tim Ryan. Um, we're, we're at in the process, so you know, um, eh, Candido, our deputy city manager, is working with the county. Uh, Administrator Martha Henry has designated her deputy, um, county manager to work with us. Um, to, to basically do, uh, uh, an assessment, a survey of the land. To be able to really know how much of that land is ours and there's a sliver, um, in Hollywood, so we should be getting that information soon, within the next couple of weeks. And we'll bring you up to date on, on that. Um, working with the Broward County Engineering Division, um, conducting, conducting assess- assessment on, um, all our city streets. Um, and I was also in communication earlier today with our finance director. And we will be able to add another one of those towers that we've discussed and we won't have to wait. Until next fiscal year, we will be able to procure that in this fiscal year. Um, so just continue to assess the city, ensuring that public safety is, is number one. And we look forward to procuring, um, another one of those cameras that has really worked out, like you explained, eh, Mayor James. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, just two things, uh, I wanted to add that there are also those flashing lights that are on JA Ely that are on both sides, I'm not sure where it came from. Um, one is on Hollywood side and one is on outside, uh, big flashing lights in there, solar lights, uh, for the kids at play and I think that is, is, is something else that is an added bonus. To that, and the second thing, um, we didn't, we didn't discuss this, but the CACAB, the new liaison, that, that probably should come from the city. That we had discussed, uh, and I know I spoke with the city manager and she was recommending Corinne. I'm not sure, uh, with the city attorney, what we need to do to finalize that into, or if we needed to change anything in a resolution, I don't know, but. Um, that, that is something that probably should change.
We'll take a look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, city attorney?
I have nothing to add, Mayor.
City clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, upcoming meetings, um, Monday, and, and I said Monday, September thirteenth at five thirty is the CRE Board Meeting. Followed by the regular city commission meeting at seven PM. I will remind you that this will be a hybrid meeting. Insofar as the first budget public hearing will be included on your regular commission agenda. And that the state requires that three of the commissioners be physically present as a quorum in the same room. And so, uh, through my polling, I've, uh, did. And so uh, through my polling, I've uh determined that Vice Mayor Salvino and Commissioners Davis and Llewellyn have agreed to appear in person on the dais uh on September thirteen. And.
Change that, Tom, because we're not gonna have a budget meeting and we're, half of us are here and half of us are not. So I'll be present as well.
Uh, okay, that's fine. Um, as far as, well, we've gotta keep in mind the social distancing and that sort of thing, the spacing and and whatnot. So, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, um, Commissioner Llewella?
Yeah, I I just wanted to ask, um, I, I didn't know if um Legal was gonna talk about this, and I guess they didn't. But what, can, can we get an update about what's going on with the Thousand Mermaids Project? Because I understand that there's some problems.
There, there's a meeting this Thursday here at City Hall to meet with the representative to discuss uh the impediments that they've come across in placing structures in the ocean.
Okay.
This Thursday afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thursday at what time, Tom?
Two thirty.
Thank you. All right, and with that, uh, good evening and meeting adjourned.